Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Montemoy Regional School Committee meeting Thursday, January ninth, two thousand twenty. Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, excuse me, meeting. Does anyone have any comments or changes they'd like to make to the meeting minutes before approval? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment, an opportunity for someone to speak additional time at the discretion of the chair. Is there anyone here at this time who'd like to speak at public comment?
Good evening, everybody.
Sit down. That one is, nope, now that's not.
Hello? Hello?
That one's better, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so, my name is Paul Tambolio. I'm here with my wife Shannon Tambolio. We met last time in December discussing our request for safe transportation to hockey practices for both the boys' and girls' teams, which take place at rinks at distant locations, namely in the Hyannis Youth Community Center. This is something that was provided for for the first four years, particularly in the boys' school hockey team. Last year, it was then discontinued, practices to and from, bus rides to and from practices. It was discontinued last year without any warning. It had always been budgeted for in the past for the first four years. And as we know historically, there have been some very tragic accidents with high school hockey teams, most notably in Falmouth with the passing of two students on their way back from a hockey practice. They were driving cars independently. There's been much discussion about being fair to teams, having to do for one team, having to do for all the teams. I understand this point. It's very important. I would like to reference, however, though, that certain dispensation is made for some teams and not for others. Namely, I do know that with some teams, equipment such as helmets is paid for by the school, stating that it's required for safety purposes. I fully understand and appreciate that. By that same token, I do believe that something that another team might need, such as the hockey team, which does not have equipment paid for and is funded by the parents, they do require safe transportation to and from the school to the rink. I don't think that's too much to ask for. Here is a copy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts MIAA Cooperative Teams and What Is Expected. The guidelines for the host school, which happens to be Montemoy in this case, it says, "The principal of the host school should assure the board that during preliminary local discussions, adequate attention was given to the following." Numbers one through twenty-two and number five on this list is "safe and adequate transportation arrangements were made." That would include safe transportation to and from practice. I understand that, you know, the golf team and the tennis team are in the same boat. However, the golf team plays five hundred yards down there. The tennis team walks two hundred and fifty yards across through there to get to their respective courts and things, which is not without risk, but it's a far cry from having sophomores, juniors, and seniors driving fifteen miles in the snow and ice at night in the wintertime with students who have no other rides, who may or may not be allowed to go into the cars with them because of junior operating restrictions and things. And we know of at least one family whose child is not allowed to participate because the family cannot make the travel obligations which are required because there is no transportation. So having said that, that is my case to be made for this, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else at this time for public comment? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to recognitions.
In terms of recognitions, we would like to thank the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod for their grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Harpich Elementary School to cover the transportation costs of an upcoming field trip. We are grateful for the donation from Saint Peter's Lutheran Church Psalm Group in the amount of seven hundred dollars to help our homeless and at-risk students. They were also provided gift bags with toiletries and gift cards from CBS Stop &amp; Shop and the Orpheum Theater. We purchased seven hundred dollars in gift cards to American Express, Old Navy, Marshalls, Best Buy, and Stop &amp; Shop and distributed them in one hundred dollar increments to each of the seven students here at the high school. We'd like to recognize and thank Brian and Gloria Savin for their donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the food service program to help families in need. We also thank the San Pon Foundation for their generous donation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, which will go to the Montemoy Regional High School Lighthouse Fund to help support needy students. And last but not least, after twenty-five years, the art of charity has dissolved, and we would like to thank them for all of their support over the year. As Montemoy Regional School District alone, they have granted us well in excess of a hundred thousand dollars over the years. So, thank you to the art of charity.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Reports and discussions, Dr. Carpenter again for the Academic Excellence Award.
All right. Each year, I have the privilege of awarding the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's academic awards, or their certificate of academic excellence to one student. The awards are given based on students that are at the top of their class, but who also contribute to the school and greater community in activities and leadership. And this year, we have with us Sage Barnes, who is this year's recipient. So Sage, how about if you come up here to the mic and I will go embarrass you? So, nobody likes to have people talk about them in public. And, you know, so each year, I have different people who largely have written college recommendations for you, and your guidance counselors send me little snippets that get compiled together. And so here's sort of the amalgam of what folks have said about Sage. Sage ranks as one of the finest students we have. As a senior, she's risen to the top of an extremely talented class and accumulated a tremendous record of academic success. Her academic, personal, and civic accomplishments are truly outstanding and represent a young woman with incomparable intellectual promise and the desire to make an impact on the world. Sage demonstrates the ability to acquire information in a way that makes it seem almost effortless. She has the capacity to comprehend the most abstract concepts, down to the smallest details. She possesses a remarkable work ethic, always putting forth outstanding effort, even when life pulls her in competing directions, such as a school play, a singing engagement, or an AP study session. Sage manages to balance her commitments and is unequivocally prepared. Her transcript is evidence that she is talented, motivated, and dedicated to achieving high academic success. Her constant inquisitive mind finds her asking tremendously insightful questions, searching to make connections to the real world. Her teachers describe her as someone who has already developed a deep sense of understanding. Perhaps what separates Sage from her peers is that she is much more than a classroom student. She's a supremely gifted vocalist and musician and performs in numerous ensembles, both in the school and community. To name a few, Sage is an integral member of the school's prestigious Select Choir, Jazz Band, Ladies Acapella, and Handbell Choir. She's a regular fixture on stage where she consistently holds lead roles in her fall drama productions, as well as the annual Spring Musical. She has extended her talents into the community through her work with the Academy of Performing Arts and Cape Cod Theater Company, where she is a student representative on the Board of Trustees. She's also amassed countless recognitions for All-State Music Festival, Southeastern Music Festival, as well as the All-Cape and Islands Music Festival. Most impressively, Sage was selected as a backup vocalist for Kristin Chinoweth at her performance at Provincetown Hall. There are more than grades and test scores which define Sage. Though hers are truly impressive, it's impossible to articulate all her accomplishments, but absolutely it's important to highlight that she was recognized as the two thousand nineteen commended student in the National Merit Scholar Program for outstanding performance on the PSAT. She's named the James Otis Scholar by the Massachusetts Chapter of American Board and Trial Advocates in recognition of her academic performance, extracurricular involvement, and interests. Sage was presented a Brown University Junior Book Award, a French Book Award, a Music Book Award at her annual Breakfast of Excellence. Last spring, she excels despite obstacles thrown her way, is mature beyond years, and simply extraordinary. To frame her truly exceptional capacity, Sage received the Cape Cod Philanthropic Partners Outstanding Youth Award in October of two thousand nineteen for her tremendous efforts raising over forty-six thousand dollars for muscular dystrophy research. So Sage, you are very worthy of this, and it's been just my pleasure over my seven years here of watching you sort of come to maturity as a senior here.
They're gonna take a little photo break.
Yep, photo op.
It's gonna be a hard act to follow. Good job, Mom and Dad. That's a tough act to follow, but right into air quality update for the Montemoy Regional Middle School by Mr. Rick Travers. Can't get much more exciting than that.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. So, there's a good conclusion here, I believe. So, I'm just gonna run down real quick kind of some of the list actions we've done. I'll keep it as interesting possible and as brief as possible, okay? And then let you know where we're at. Okay, so on January second, we came into the building and some teachers pulled me into a room and said, geez, we've got a real funky smell, cottagey kind of stagnant smell. So right away, we went into action to make sure that all is well. So, keep in mind that the building had been closed, at least that section, for twelve days. I mean, there was some cleaning going on, but for the most part, we shut those doors and isolated. So, just to go over real quick here, okay, so both of these rooms are but an outside wall. And of course, with all the dampness we've had in the fall and this winter, we're not surprised. So that being said, so on the next day, both classrooms were relocated. Also, the Univent filters in the wing were replaced, and this task is normally done during the routine maintenance twice yearly anyway, okay? So that same morning, the district roofing company, Kazalt Roofing, inspected the envelope for the building and the area and assured that the roof was tight. However, they did find some outside trim in need of a flashing upgrade. We requested a proposal and are waiting. Then on Monday, January sixth, Marina Brock, the health specialist from the Barnstable County Department of Health and Environment, performed an assessment of the ground floor southside area rooms. Later that same morning, we met with another construction company to examine the outside walls and to give us a cost in replacing the outside trim boards in an AZAC-type product along with upgraded flashing. So, then on Tuesday morning, the district HVAC contractor, mechanical air control, were on site to ensure that the exhaust fans in the ring, in the wing, excuse me, were operating properly and to inspect the duct work for the poles. So, they did replace defective belts and units in those areas are working very well right now. So on that same day, we received a report from the Barnstable County Health, Department of Health. Marina Brock stated that she does not consider there to be any health concerns for the general population in our wing. We made the report available to anyone interested in viewing it. So as of today, the difference in airflow is significant, which may be attributed to the repairs to our exhaust fans. Also, the odor is undetectable as of right now. So as a follow-up, we're going to do a air quality test, mold test, performed by Universal Environment Consultants out of Framingham on Saturday at ten o'clock in the morning. We're gonna do that, just as an added precaution. And then we'll make, they should be available by the beginning of next week. And we will let anyone who needs to see those or wants to view those, obviously, we'll make those accessible. So, but the good thing is, right now, those rooms and superintendent and myself have walked through there just as of this afternoon, and it's undetectable. So, we think that maybe, if I can draw my own conclusion here, that just being shut with, and not being used and not having these units running like they normally would during occupied a day, school day or week, made a huge difference, and we just got stagnant in there. And that's my hope. But of course, the air quality will reassure us of that, okay? If there are any questions, yes.
Any questions? Sharon, I'm thrilled to hear this. I think air quality is really important. I know occasionally schools do have problems with that. This looks very thorough. Is there any, I'm unaware about regulations, if there are any, for periodically, you know, every so many years or anything, doing air quality in different buildings? Or is it only when something comes up?
Normally, at this point, it is pricey, there's no doubt. So, it could be implemented, but you just, you will have to designate either the entire school or certain areas that maybe have experienced some kind of odor that people are picking up on. So it is costly, it can be done, but there is no mandatory at this point.
The central exhaust not running, not operating because we don't have it on while we're on vacation?
At some points, we go into unoccupied mode.
Right.
To save on energy. And but at this point, I think we're gonna have to change that a little bit.
I'm wondering with the age of the building and where there's nothing really penetrating in, but it's the Cape and common.
And I think this, our exhaust fans were not operating properly. We knew we had a problem, but it's a significant problem that we've been shipping away at, because it is costly to replace the exhaust fan or drive whatever. We have had them looked at, and we did get an analysis that, and in a lot of our buildings, we are right now attempting to get these repairs made, but of course, they are costly. So we chip away at it with our maintenance budget and do the best we can with it.
So what's the plan for the upcoming break for February? We build on or continue to shut them off?
No, we're gonna, we're changing our protocol at this point. All in the name, of course, obviously, saving energy, but it's kind of a double-edged sword.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions for Mr. Travers? Dr. Carpenter?
I just, I just wanna thank both Principal Wilson and Rick Travers here for, you know, for just sort of getting ahead of this. You know, I think you have to, you have to have two classrooms. It was Amy Micah's classroom and Tracy Anna's classroom, which are ground floor, the south side of the fifth grade wing at the middle school.
Just don't do it now.
I had, you know, there was, I think, I didn't smell it that first day. I wasn't here when, when kids came back, but, but you know, sort of that musty smell, sort of like if you walk in a cabin that had been closed up for a while. And, you know, so the concern was, okay, with all the rain that we've been having, have we developed some sort of mold situation? You know, so, you know, so it's to go look, is there, what is possibly penetrating on the outside? Is there, you know, something, you know, something on the inside? So they went in and opened up, you know, ceilings and walls and looked under, you know, looked under flashing. But again, you know, we, you know, while, you know, while the room smells, while both rooms today, when I went in them and yesterday afternoon, you know, I couldn't smell anything. That doesn't mean, you know, that, that there might not be something there. So that we're gonna go one step forward and still have a consultant come in and just, you know, just check for safety before, you know, we give families the ult go. So the, I believe the contractor's gonna be coming in Saturday
Yes.
to do the test, and we should have a report back by Monday and should be able to go and know if we can just tell people, it's all clear. Let's move back into those spaces next week.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Everybody all set? Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Travers.
Very welcome.
Next item on the agenda would be discussing the athletic transportation for all sports practices, and I believe Karen Delmat is here to go over what we currently have in place and estimated transportation costs.
Yes, I have a presentation.
And a presentation. It's spinning.
It always takes long when you want to.
Exactly. No, why? You brought it with you? How come I never get it? Usually I have extra banter for these moments of silence, but I don't have anything tonight, people. Just get back in the groove. Other than everyone's wearing a lot of green tonight. I don't know what was going on with green tonight. Mary's pants are green. Can't see them, but they are. I know. It's not even St. Patrick's Day. Certainly didn't make this easy the way you did that. And while Karen's getting ready, all the members have a copy of what she's provided tonight. It was in your folders when you got here. And I believe the copies were available up front here as well. Looks like a spreadsheet, Sharon.
Thank you. There's a lot of stuff in here.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry about that. And thank you for having me tonight as well. So, talking about athletics transportation. So, a little history about the ice hockey program and the transportation that has been provided in the past. The co-op was first established in two thousand fourteen with Mashpee. I wasn't here at that time. I didn't start at Montemoy until November of two thousand sixteen. And so, in order to, my understanding is that in order to increase participation and to ease into kind of a new endeavor with starting hockey, we went into this co-op and the athletic director at the time and principal agreed to, to provide transportation to and from practices at that time. In sixteen, seventeen, that was my first year, again, transportation was provided to and from practices for after-school practices, only late evening practices, or weekend events, transportation was not provided for. In seventeen, eighteen, that season, I spoke with the coaches and notified them and parents that it would probably be the last year for transportation for practices, to give them a year notification to plan for the next year, the upcoming years. And then in eighteen, nineteen, which was last year, again, I notified the coaches and players and parents in advance of the season, reminding them that transportation would not be provided for practices at that time. At that point, I did have a couple, I think there were two parents who reached out at that time, just asking for clarification as to why. And so I explained it to them and it was understood, and we didn't have any issues that I was made aware of, of student athletes being able to get to practice. And then throughout this entire time, the district has never provided transportation for the girls' ice hockey program. And so, that is an iniquity and a Title IX violation. And so, that also was, was part of the reasoning. I did a little research, asking other Cape Cod Island schools what they do for transportation for their ice hockey teams. And this is both boys' and girls'. And the only school that provides any consistent transportation is Falmouth, and they only provide it provide it right after school, um, drop off only. So if they have practices later in the evening, um, or on the weekends, they, the students are responsible for their own transportation. Mashpee, who we're in the co-op with, um, only provides transportation when there's a driver and a van available. Um, and their van is also used for freshman basketball, so therefore it's not always available. And to my knowledge, for the first, um, six weeks of this season, they have not provided consistent transportation to practices either. We do have, um, several off-campus sports, um, some of which are walking distance and some are not. So our boys' ice hockey team practices and plays at Hyannis Youth and Community Center. Our girls' ice hockey team practices and plays at Charles Moore Arena. Our boys' and girls' golf teams do play and practice at Cranberry Valley, but they also play and practice at Eastward Ho, which is in Chatham. Um, our sailing program sails out of Pleasant Bay Community Building in Chatham. Um, and then cross-country, boys tennis, girls tennis, and JV baseball are all walking distance. But again, off-campus, but walking distance, um, over at Brooks Park or at Island Pond. And so in telling the story, um, just a reminder and a note of what Title IX law means. Um, and in this case, um, transportation to practices would be a benefit of, um, and therefore it states that no person in the U.S. shall on the basis of sex be excluded from participation in or be denied a benefit of. Um, and therefore, I feel it's all or none. So we either provide it for all of our teams that are off-campus and would have to drive and be put in that situation, or, um, none of them, um, in, in equity with transportation wise. Um, I did a cost analysis too of, of what it would cost to, um, add in transportation for these five sports that are off-campus and not close enough to walk. Um, and I have given the school community detailed analysis. This is just the totals. Um, so the self-explanatory, but this would be for practices and home games, considering that home games are also at the same rink. And if we don't want them, students driving themselves to practice, then we probably don't want them driving themselves to the home games either. Um, and so for boys' ice hockey, and, and this, uh, you can see it on the detailed analysis. I, um, the, when calculating transportation, it's a, it's a cost per hour for the driver as well as mileage. Um, and so I did a three-hour minimum. Um, you don't just get there for the hour of the practice. They need time to, they'll be leaving right after school. They need time to get ready. And then after practice, they change, they get back on, and then they have to drive back. So three hours would be a minimum for all of these sports. It could be more. So this is, this is a quote of this year's pricing at a minimum cost of what it would cost to add in transportation for these five sports for practices. With all that being said and, and shown, um, my recommendation for three main reasons, um, would be to, to maintain the status quo. Um, first would be the cost to the district and the additional cost to add transportation to practices for five, um, sports. The equity piece, again, that's why we'd be adding it for five sports because of equity and transportation. Um, and it is common practice among Cape Town Island schools that they do not provide transportation for practices for boys' and girls' ice hockey. So with that in mind, that would be my recommendation to maintain, um, as we are. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Um, any questions for the, yeah, Tina?
Yeah, I was curious, um, Karen, in the cost per mile, it says point seven four four. What was that based on? Cause I think the federal is point five eight.
That is the number I got from Cape Co Collaborative of what they charge us per mile.
Okay.
Any discussion or questions from the board? They will be an opportunity at the end, the public comment section at the end, absolutely. Any other questions or, uh, Sharon?
I'm very concerned about our budget. So in that regard, um, I'm concerned about this. However, I am concerned about a lot of things that we don't, as a school, pay for, that are related to school. And I don't think this is at all unique to Montomoy. Clearly it's not. But I think we need to look at that. And I think, um, when, when we look to make sure we can cover everything, all of the staff without any reductions and all of that, I'd like us to be able to do something to try to help this out because it is related to school.
Karen, I have a question. Um, you've got Hyannis, Tony Kent, and Charles Moore down.
Correct.
Do the boys rotate between Hyannis and Tony Kent? And the girls are just at Charles Moore?
Correct. The girls are just at Charles Moore. The boys are at Hyannis three days a week and Tony Kent one night a week for practices.
Because it seems.
All of our games are at Hyannis.
It seems like the, the least amount of mileage is the Tony Kent rink, um, based on this, seven point seven four.
Correct.
Um, and, uh, what else was I gonna say? There, I'm assuming the Hyannis one is also utilized because we do work with Mashpee and that was.
That is correct, yeah.
Kind of amicable for both.
It's a midpoint.
Right.
That, and it's easier to get ice time in Hyannis because they have two rinks.
Yeah. Okay. I have one more question.
Yes, Tina, I'm sorry. Um, so not knowing about the schedule for boys' and girls' field hockey, do they, I'm assuming they don't play on the same night? So we're looking at two separate, is that?
Um, they do play on the same nights, but they play at two different rinks.
Oh, okay.
And what, what time are their practices? I mean, I know they, they all change and they change halfway through the year, uh, through the season.
The, the boys, um, are pretty consistent. The girls vary much more. The boys practice, um, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday at HYCC from four twenty to five thirty, or four thirty to five twenty. I think that's what it is.
Okay.
Um, and then the Friday nights, they're at, um, Tony Kent. I think it's at seven or six, six to seven or s, it's later, but it's Friday nights.
At seven, I think. Okay.
Um, and then the girls vary. The girls go early morning on Mondays, the six AM. Um, and then their times, I, I don't, I can't remember their times off the top of my head. We are not the host school for girls, so.
Okay. So there's varying times. And then, for instance, if the girls, if we were, if you were to go forward with this and to be equitable, all teams would have transportation to and from, looking at having the girls have to arrive here at like five in the morning in order to get a bus to go to their six o'clock practice?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to kind of understand their practice schedules. And similarly, boys' golf, girls' golf, are those consistently the same times right after school?
Yes. Yeah.
So the only reason that the hockey changes is because they're sharing their rinks with different people, you know, trying to figure out the slot times and, um?
We're kind of at the mercy of the rink.
Yeah.
They tell us when we can go.
Okay.
And, and the boys are pretty lucky because they are pretty consistent and it's an early time, so they're not getting home at nine, ten o'clock at night. So.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
Uh, I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Tina and then Terry? Terry then Tina? How about that?
Sounds good. Go ahead.
It's a comedy team. Just a quick clarifying question. Um, so the boys' team, is it, is it mo, so that's no longer co-op? Is that correct? Is that strictly Montomoy team?
No, it is still a co-op with Mashpee.
And I know the girls is. Okay.
So for the boys' co-op, we are the host school. Um, so.
Okay.
I do all the scheduling and all the budgeting. Um, and then at the end of the season, um, we calculate a per-player cost. And Mashpee pays us for the number of players that they have.
Okay. And then it's reverse for the girls?
Reverse for the girls. So for the girls, NOSIT is the host school.
Right.
So they track all of that. And then they send us a bill for our per-player cost.
Okay. Thank you. Great.
This would be separate from that, however, because it would be just for our students. So the full cost of transportation for practices would fall solely on Montomoy.
Ah, okay. Okay, great.
Follow-up question up on the co-op girls and boys. But what are our numbers of, of the Montomoy girls' hockey, uh, total girls' team is X, and there are ten girls coming from Montomoy? What are those numbers?
We have four girls on the, on the Montomoy. Um, NOSIT, Cape Tech co-op, Cape Tech has one. And I believe NOSIT has eighteen. They're a little bit lower this year than they have been in the past. Um.
Wow.
And then for the boys' hockey, um, we have sixteen, I believe. Um, and Mashpee has six or seven. Um, and it gets a little, um, not a hundred percent sure because we have some practice players only, eighth graders who are practice players only. Um, and they don't get figured in because they're only practicing. So we only charge for the number, um, that are actually playing in the games.
Follow-up, just so that I can understand. So the girls' team, there are about eighteen girls from NOSIT on the team.
Yes.
And they have the same issue. So they have a school bus at the school and the parents of the girls get to the high school with a car or however they get there, get on the bus, drive direct to Hyannis.
Um, no, the girls get to, the, the girls' hockey team plays at Charles Moore Arena in Hyannis. And all of the girls get to practice on their own. Their families themselves are responsible for their own transportation, all three schools, NOSIT, Cape Tech, and Montomoy.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Um, we are gonna move on now to, we're actually gonna, we're gonna flip-flop number four and five. So if we could have, um, the Chatham Elementary School dives deep into learning presentation.
You know, on the agenda it says it's just me presenting, but it's not.
Dr. Millen and Company. Oh, this is so pretty.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as we're getting settled here, I just want to thank you for putting us on the agenda today. And I do have to make an apology. I promised the school committee last June that I would come to you early in the fall and talk to you about what we're doing as far as our work in deep learning. And now as we turn the page to the next decade, we are here. But I brought you two gifts. The first gift is I don't have to talk about the playground anymore because it is done.
Whee!
Yay. Hi. The second gift is all of these wonderful educators behind me. They are part of what we call the coherence team, the deep learning coherence team at Chatham Elementary School. It's a snippet of them, even though it looks like a large group, and we'll explain more about that later, but they're here to share with you some, um, of our information that I promised this fall. So I just want to set the context, okay? So when we first started, um, this work, it was a little over a year ago. And we were able to start this work because I had met with, um, a, a director from a collaborative called South Coast Educational Collaborative. I met him at a conference and he was engaging his work with his, um, staff and his faculty on the new pedagogies of deep learning. And again, we'll get to explaining all that in a minute. But basically, that's a global partnership. There's about, um, I guess there's about seven countries, a little bit more than that at this point, involved in this partnership. There's over thirteen hundred schools that are in, involved in this partnership. There are individual districts, there's individual schools, and then there's whole countries, like the whole country of Uruguay is involved in this. Um, and Canada and some of the others, Hong Kong and, um, England, Australia. Where am I missing? There's a whole, a slew of them now. So the partnership's goal is to get part, educators to come together and to shift the role of teachers to that of activators for thousands of children, as you can imagine, across the gro, globe. So I was familiar with this global partnership and Dr. Carpenter will know, I've been talking about it for a long time. And Dr. Full, and I know the theory's based off of it, it's Dr. Fulon's theories that it's based off of. So when we were offered this generous opportunity to join with South Coast Educational Collaborative, it's not our collaborative, so I sought approval from Dr. Carpenter and Mr. Smith, and they both agreed that this was a wonderful opportunity. So it fit perfectly with our school-wide improvement goals, and it also fit nicely with a strategic plan. So a year ago, I threw it out to my faculty and I said, hey, what do you think about this? So by the end of the faculty meeting, we had five people on board right off the bat. By January, we had about, uh, ten people on board. And by the end of the year, we had seventeen people that were involved in what we called the scouting team at that time. And really what that scouting team was, kind of unpacked what this all meant. What did it look like in our schools? What did all the information and vocabulary mean? And we just met weekly and monthly, whenever we could get together. And by the end of the year, this team, but also our entire educational team at the school, decided that they wanted to go to scale with this. They wanted this to be what we addressed as far as how we were addressing our achievement goals, how we were trying to overcome our equity and access issues, how we're increasing our social emotional learning within our classrooms, and then how we also wanted to make sure that we had a collective understanding of effective practices. And again, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. But I have to say, it's very unusual, if you know educators, to get over fifty percent of your staff and then, one of your board members is smiling at me, and then an entire school to be what we call early adopters in the innovation phase. It's amazing. So we knew this mattered. And so we moved forward on it. So today, we will be sharing with you what we lovingly call in elementary school the five Ws. The what, the where, the how, the when, and the what, um, the who of deep learning. And there's a couple of things that I want to ask you for some support for. Because when we do this learning and when we do this work at school, we set norms. And it was really important for us to set these norms. And so we're gonna ask, um, that you accept these norms when we present to you today. And I'm just gonna briefly go over them, okay? So the first norm that we set was that we are all learners here. And basically, that means to us that, you know, there's actually a norm for both our learning, our adult learning, but also in our classroom learning, that we might presume, uh, we presume positive intentions in all this work that we've been going through. And that we have our best thinking at this time, but that we might change our thinking. And, and we need to be tolerant that we might change our thinking. And even though I said something yesterday, I might change my thinking today. So that's our first norm. Our second and third norms are for the same reasons. We're ve, we are hard on ideas. We're really questioning these things, but we're soft on people. And then the other one is that reflection brings insight. Now, my favorite one out of the ones that we have up there is to go slow to go fast. It's really important. And again, if you know educators, sometimes we like that shiny bullet. We like to think that we found something that solves all problems. But we know that there's not one method, one way, one program, one style of teaching that fixes everything for every school, every district, every child, everything. So it's really important that in this process, we are participating in what we call an inquiry cycle. And that inquiry cycle means that we sit back and we watch and we say, is this effective? Is this meeting the needs of our kids here in Montomoy? And then what do we do next? Do we stay with it, abandon it, move forward? So going slow to go fast. But that means too, that we have to go. We have to start somewhere. So we have started. Okay? So, accept our norms? So today, we are going to be sharing, um, the what, the what. And I have, uh, this team's gonna introduce themselves as they come up, but I have Ms. Taryn, and I'm gonna say Mackenzie, she just got married, Mackenzie. And she's a fourth grade teacher, and she's gonna have the arduous task of trying to define the what and the why.
Hello, good evening. So I am gonna try my best to describe what deeper learning is and why we think it's so important. Um, just to start off the bat, we know that the world is changing. So we're tasked with giving students the preparation for a world that's in the future, but also starting that today. So that's what we're just gonna introduce our video with. It's best to see deep learning in action to understand how it plays out in the classroom. So a couple of fourth grade students with the help of Ms. Kathy Ware have put together this video of some of the projects or activities we've done in our own classrooms that involve deep learning. And afterward, I'll make some connections And afterward, I'll make some connections into how it ties into those practices. And it's brief, I promise. Oh, sure. And the sound. Is there a sound input already on it? Oh, thank you. If not, we can always read it too. That's okay, we can just narrate it. That's okay, we can just, we'll play the captions, then I'll explain it as we go. So we have a series of photos just of what the kids have done so far, just in this year. And the students are narrating it in the background, but you can see what they're saying as well.
Picture the progress as young learners tackle new and meaningful challenges. And then turn ideas into action. Picture the progress as young learners work with others and share their ideas with an audience. Picture the progress as young learners are engaged and excited about learning the ex- and expressing themselves creatively. And picture the progress as young learners engaged in the world we live in and make an impact in our community.
We know that the world is changing, so preparing students for an ever-changing world will require a new way of thinking from all of us. We believe that the best way to prepare young, young learners for the future is to offer learning that is interactive, relevant, collaborative, and directly linked to the grade level learning standards. Sitting, listening, and repeating information is outdated and will simply not do for our students. We want to dive deeper. Our learners need to create, connect, and use information in a variety of creative ways. That's why Chatham Elementary School is developing a deep learning, learning approach to education. To prepare our learners for the future, we focus on helping learners develop global competencies, citizenship, character, communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and creativity. The world is shifting, and here at CES, we are leading that change. Our school was selected as one of the most innovated schools in the state recently. We know how important the future of education is for our community and our children.
Alright, so in that video, we're able to see some examples that involve student goal setting, where they took their own ideas of what they wanted to accomplish this year. And they were able to reflect on it in our first report card trimester. And now we're gonna continue on through the rest of the year. Um, they're also given opportunities for creative problem solving. So they're able to put their voice into their choice of what they want to research. And that just is where their passion comes through. So our students are solving problems using what they learn in school and their own creative solutions. The more we emphasize these skills in an authentic way, the stronger this connection will be for those students between what is done in the classroom and what they'll bring with them outside of our building. We've also included a small link up in the top corner. So we can share the presentation with whoever would like to see them. That is a link to the New Pedagogies of Deeper Learning website, which is kind of our core hub. Um, you'll see it in the blue dot in the corner. But that gives a lot of the terms, definitions, or examples of more student work that's been done in other schools as well, which is a great starting point. On this next slide, we have a collection of the skills that we hope stick with students through deeper learning. So you saw some examples of the projects that students were engaging in. But they're also developing the, um, passion, plan, and purpose. They are contrib- contributing to the betterment of a community that's beyond their own classmates. They are taking it, um, for example, we did a project where we baked bread with the fourth graders. And they brought that to a local community, uh, food bank. So they are understanding how their actions impact others. They're also, um, able to develop general habits of mind that are so useful in different environments beyond what we're teaching them in math, science, reading, and writing. So altogether, these skills are helping them be better citizens in and outside of our classroom. And we're gonna also give you more examples of different situations where they can be used as well.
So the question always is, okay, how? How do we get there from here, right? It's one of those things. And we know about education that when innovation or shifts happen, you know, the more likely a shift is to happen that will benefit learners and benefit student achievement, the least likely it is to come into the schools. It's a research proven fact. The more likely it's not, it's the faster it integrates into schools, believe it or not. So how do we get there? This work is a process. And so, um, you, what we need to know is that it requires all of us to kinda shift our thinking. It requires us to, uh, design learning in a way that is purposeful and student-centered, which is not new. But in cor- includes those, around that circle, there are those four elements. In order to get to what Mrs. McInty is describing and what the children in the, uh, video shared is that we, as educators, need to know and understand those effective pedagogical practices. Now, pedagogical is just basically the art and science of teaching. It's a relationship between the teacher, the student, and the instruction and the practice inside of schools. So we really have to have, we as educators need to have a really deep understanding. Both of those tried and true practices that we know work. But also, we need to be open and willing to try innovative practices and see if they're better meets the needs of our diverse populations that we have in our schools. We also need to make sure that the delivery of that content and the standards is deep so that it sticks, okay? We also actively seek, um, on the right-hand side, you'll see, learning partnerships. And I know over the years, I've talked about a lot of our partnerships with Asharktivity and with, um, Audubon. And I, I can't even name them all, they're not coming to my head right now. But there are so many outside experts in this field. And believe it or not, these guys will disagree with me probably. But educators are not experts in everything. We're not. See, I told you. They're not experts in every standard, every skill, every, um, eh, thing. They're just not. So when we break down those walls, when we change, uh, when we seek out and actively allow children themselves to reach out to partners and experts outside the classroom, we bring down those walls. And then educators also reach out for their own pedagogical, for their own learning, their own, um, professional practices. And we together collectively understand that, then it enhances and deepens all of our learning. So breaking down the walls is that learning partnership idea. Now later on in the presentation, you're gonna hear more about leveraging digital and the learning environments. But I think, eh, you know, you can start to tell what this requires us to do as educators. And it's definitely a shift. It's definitely a change from the way things just always were or used to be to the way they are now. So we have Ms. May Comber and Mrs. King to share a couple of those vignettes.
There we go. Hi. Um, I have been in this district for a very long time. And I have to say that I'm very excited and energized by some of the things that we're doing. I can't read with my glasses on, sorry. Alright, so what I wanted to touch upon is in the past, um, and I've only ever been in kindergarten. In the past, when we were teaching a new skill or a new topic or a new something to, to children, one of the things we would do is we might begin by reading them a story. And we'd tell the children the things that they need to know. And we'd give them a pretty little worksheet, and then we'd be done. Today, however, things are a little bit different. Today, we provide a le- a learning environment with a purpose that is student-driven. When learning about force, that's the, what we have been doing in kindergarten, we were talking about force and push and pull. And one of the experiments we set up involved laundry baskets and the children. So my initial intention when I did this activity was to have the children observe how force pushing and pulling, um, themselves in the laundry basket across the rug would compare to pushing and pulling themselves across the tile floor. However, my intention during the course of this didn't, didn't turn out quite the way that I had started it out today. Um, so during the pushing and pulling each other in the baskets, the kids were making discoveries. They were asking questions. They were working together to solve some problems that had arisen. And instead of stopping that inquiry, I allowed the students' interests and questions to take them on a path of deeper learning. Because the children are given the opportunity to experience the standards that we teach, we teach them following their interests and their insights, and then their knowledge grows. I look at deep learning as something that's internalized. It stays with the child. It's learning that sticks. This was shown in so many ways in my classroom in the last few weeks. One of the things we ended with in, in December, I was gonna say September. December was, I'm the gingerbread man. So we'd been doing our science, our literature, our math. And we ended it with something that I've done a lot in the past. They had to create something to help the gingerbread man get safely across the river. But this year, I said, when you're thinking about making something to get that gingerbread man across the river, think about force. Think about what you need to do that's gonna help that gingerbread man, gingerbread man get across. They worked together in a team. They came up with one idea, they planned it, they came up with a list of materials they need. And then they made their invention. Um, that was one of the little slides that was up there earlier in the commercial. They were pushing things in the water. They encouraged each other, they worked together. After it was done, the next day, we talked about what we did. We talked about the things that they learned. And I had them reflect upon what they did. I had them write about what happened, what they saw. And then I had them reflect so they could think, if I'm gonna do this again next time, from what I observed, what kind of changes could I make? And they made a brief little, um, example of some of the things they might wanna try next time. One of the things that I noticed is as we've been going through our, our daily curriculum activities, this concept of force with the children has truly stuck with them. We were reading Jan Brett's The Mitten. I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. But at the end of the book, the mitten has expanded. And when the bear sneezes, the mitten flies up into the air. So as I was reading and we saw the mitten fly up into the air, there was a chorus of, that's force! So we had conversations about that. This week, we're learning about pirates. In our background building, we're learning about parts of a pirate ship. So when I was showing this, the PowerPoint slides, one of them was, uh, talking about hoisting the sails. In that picture was a pulley. The children were saying, that's force. I said, well, what kind of force is it? And they said, well, you're pulling. So they went through that information. They saw the slide on the fact that wind blows sails and helps the ship move. We had a conversation about how that is also force. We talked about how the, the pirates and their rowboats would row, what kind of force that was. And as a native Cape Codder, this is very embarrassing for me to say, I don't know what you call the front of the ship. But the part that's pointy. Um, they, we talked about how that uses force to, to like split its way into the water to, to make the, the ship move. So they have lots of conversations about that. So they noticed and commented on the use of force, which in turn brought about deeper understanding of the functions of the parts of the ship. This was all brought up by the children in their interest. Today, we started a new unit on matter. My plan was to begin by blowing up a balloon to have them say, oh, there's air in there, Mrs. King. So I said, girls and boys, can you tell me what you noticed? The first thing they said is, you used force to blow up that balloon. So I let them lead the discussion, and it brought us back to matter. We use force to move things, um, to move matter. And my point in sharing this is to show you how the children are taking this knowledge and applying it to new situations, which in turn is expanding their knowledge base. Their excitement for learning is growing, and it's opening up the opportunities for new learning. Sometimes, deep learning takes us in that direction. It's a direction I would love to follow as the children lead us in all areas of their learning. Thank you. Um, and now I would like to introduce Ms. May Comber, our fourth grade teacher.
We go from kindergarten to fourth grade. Um, and a very commonly used standard for fourth grade readers is to describe a character or a setting or event by using details in the text to support the description. Yesterday's classroom had the teacher assign a written response for students to describe the character or the setting or the event with the details to support the description, word for word, from the standards. Students were told what to write, ha- uh, how much to write, and what to include in the essay. And yesterday's teacher corrected the papers that were later passed back to kids who either sat up straighter because they followed the teacher's directions well, or they sank in their chairs because the teacher wasn't happy with the students' writing. In today's classroom, the environment has shifted from teacher-centered to student-centered. And practices have shifted to make assignments problem-based with the, and with an emphasis on using the six Cs. Fourth grade is currently reading the pinballs. And as soon as they're finished, which would be sometime next week, I'll give them this reading test, uh, that addresses the exact same learning standard, but also gives them voice and choice. So here is the assignment. Pull down the tasks. Design your own pinball machine, a reading test. Start off, what can you do with realistic fiction? Cardboard three types of balls and recycled goods prove mastery. Um, understanding of pinballs, of course. They had four tasks. Number one, I'll just read them real quickly. To design and engineer a pinball machine, an actual one with boxes and all, to use three balls to represent each of the three characters. And two original flippers, they had to make their own, to represent the push that motivates them to keep strong in the foster home in which they live. Again, uh, they're reading this for each character. They were to build one or more walls and two obstacles or conflicts. I'm still teaching them these things. He or she faces in life. And for each character, identify and establish an end goal he or she reaches. And again, I'm sharing that, that's the hole or the path to success. A fourth task was to choose and create another part of the machine to include other details about the characters. I wanted to give them a choice of what else they knew and share it within this, um, pinball machine. Now, I'm gonna just flip through. So they were given this. They had to, um, do a little bit of science and a little bit of math there. Uh, looking at the height of the, um, what, the, the angle. Three different times, oh, of the ramp there. And then tips for success. And then I just wanted to share with you some of the pictures. And these are some cutie pies from last year. And there's one box there, another box, very proud. Again, pinballs is labeled, all the parts of the pinball machine are labeled, the characters, the obstacles written right there. And of course, they presented these later. I do have more pictures, hold on. Oh, there we go. Um, here are some in progress. They each were, um, were accountable for their own learning. So each one made his or her own pinball machine. There's a completed one on the right. And then, this was kind of funny because one girl said, no, 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 no. I don't really wanna make a pinball machine, can't I just write the essay? And of course, uh, the choice, you know, she knew her strength was in writing. Um, and so of course, and nowadays, you try to offer as many choices for success in their learning as possible. And then the last slide was just, um, the beginning stages where the kids are, again, doing their own problem solving, making their choices. And then there's just so much analysis behind that. And that's it.
Good evening. My name is Emily Nyrick. I'm the new science teacher at the elementary school. So after hearing the classroom experiences that both Dawn and Cindy have described, it's really clear that this deep learning is a shift. It's a new way in which we as educators design these learning experiences for our students. As we discussed, these learning experiences help us envision what a successful kindergartner looks like in the year 2032. I know, hard to believe. The deep learning that we speak of fosters that kindergarten student's ability to solve the complex issues facing us today and in the future. We have a short video titled, "A Day Made of Glass", that is gonna highlight some of those, um, some of what the future is going to look like. So, this clip was made in 2017, this technology is already available to us. This clip helps us remember that our students will be living as citizens in a very different world than we do today. This deep learning shift is necessary for our students to cope with many complex issues facing society, such as unpredictable technologies, growing inequalities, climate deterioration, job uncertainty, and trust across our nation, just naming a few. So now we ask the question, what specifically is essential for our students to know, be able to do, and flourish as human citizens? The answer, in order to prepare our graduates for future challenges, we have to identify what lies at the center of the deep learning framework. Represented here are the six global competencies, also known as the six Cs. They include character, citizenship, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. When we created our own strategic plan, these were the elements that we knew were important for our students to be able to be college and career-ready in the 2030s. In order to build more clarity, we have to realize that deep learning must be content and standards-based, engaging, relevant, and authentic in order to build these six Cs. So I am going to explain how this might start rolling out in a school. So when does this happen? We have a problem that we don't know what the students are gonna need in 12 years from now. So how do we shift education to make sure our children have the necessary skills and knowledge for that year 2032, as Emily had mentioned? Our solution is that we're gonna try and figure that out together. It's gonna be constantly changing as different groups come through and students have different needs. So, deep learning is going to look different in different settings. It's hard for me to even pinpoint one definition, but an analogy that kinda helped me understand deep learning was that it's almost just like the air around us. You can't see it necessarily, but you can name the elements of it, and in what ways they might need to be represented in a classroom, and you can sense it when it's changing. But it's gonna be something that's part of our school and part of our culture as a community of teachers, when we have to adopt that. So it's definitely gonna be a continuous process as we move on, but I think that's necessary as we're shifting our learning with the students.
Okay, so as you can see, it takes work, right? It's a process. And to be honest, last November, when we were rolling this out, I was like, huh, how am I gonna do this? But then I got these guys, so I was very lucky. And I just, we just sat down and said, "How do we get there from here? 2032, our kindergartners are graduating in 2032, this isn't that far off, we have to be prepared for that, and we have to be transitioning what we're doing." So we set a simple goal, we took it small, go slow to go fast, right? So we set a simple goal, and basically, this team decided we're just gonna learn together, that we're going to try one thing in between all of our meetings each month. At each of our meetings, we began to unpack everything, all the resources, we engaged in intense discussions about beliefs, values, we developed what I would call a moral imperative to start this work. And as I mentioned earlier, the words and the actions spread throughout the building. So the team grew, and as a school-wide faculty, they then set the goal to provide that coherence throughout the building, especially with the understanding. So at least we have this time, at this time, and it might change, the set forth the goal of just understanding the air, understanding what's around us. We took advantage, if you look at the slide up there, we took advantage as much as we could of every professional development opportunity afforded to us. So we, for example, we met monthly, I met monthly, with the South Coast Educational District Leadership Team, so we are constant, constant with their, 'cause they're enrolling this as well. The, on the generous partnership, Ms. Mulvihill and Ms. Johnson-Dreyer, who's here also tonight, joined SEC out in Washington State at the National Global, or National Deep Learning Lab. They went out there to meet with educators from Utah and California and all across the country and talk with them about how they were rolling out deep learning there. We watched videos, we read literature, we engaged in as much information gathering as we could. So, but perhaps most importantly, we continue to foster partnerships and support this work. So as part of our district, our district sent me to Chicago for the facilitators' training this summer, and our district also sent the team of six teachers to Toronto for the International Deep Learning Lab. And Ms. May Comber and Ms. Ware were actually selected to share the learning that's happening on our team's behalf, and what was happening at Chatham Elementary in an international, international conference. And with our partnership with the Westgate Foundation, four of the educators that went to Toronto stayed on, and then they were able to extend their stay and visit example our schools, both in Toronto and Ottawa, that were engaged in this work far longer than any of us. So Ms. May Comber and Ms. Ware are coming up next, and they're gonna share their learning experience of hosting an insight session at the International Learning Lab, and where they put Chatham Elementary School on the Global Learning Map.
And like Dr. Mellon said, I'm nervous, she's making me nervous. While the Westgate Fund Grant sent a team to Toronto for the Learning Lab, we were able to present a session there. And as part of our professional development last year, we kept a library of deep learning opportunities and activities we collaborated on. So when the Learning Lab coordinators asked for proposals, we worked up the nerve to offer, to share our learning with others. And even though Kathy had presented professional development in other districts in New Jersey, we had never presented any kind of workshops in this global capacity before. But we saw firsthand, and through professional development and feedback from others, just how deep learning empowered students, motivated students, and engaged students in their learning, so we were very happy to share. Our proposal was accepted, we laughed, we cried,
panicked a little.
Took a deep breath, put on our T-shirts that Robin had made, Dr. Mellon had made for her staff, the deep learning right there, the six Cs. So we put those puppies on, and, where am I? And, traveled to Toronto, Canada, for the Global Learning Lab. We were there with presenters and schools from Australia, Hong Kong, New Zealand, Uruguay, Canada, Finland, Netherlands, and the USA, which was not too intimidating for our first speaking engagement. We had a picture up there of the two of us smiling, but I think it was just for show there, we were nervous. This next, oh, there we are, yes. Mrs. Ware was about to get sick there. We were a little nervous. So this was the booklet we all got, and I'm sharing, I'm not gonna share this one, I'm keeping this, we're gonna frame this, I'm sure. It was so exciting. So this was the page where, that showed the first of four insight sessions of the two-day conference. Now, our session shared examples of how classroom teachers and our media specialists collaborated to showcase just three specific examples of the deep learning. And we had an hour and 15 minutes to do it, and we were prepared with 80 slides, and again, our T-shirts. And I'm telling you, these T-shirts were a hit. They had more questions about the T-shirts than some of our activities.
They wanted to buy the T-shirts off us.
I know, they did, they did. So we wanted to bring awareness that there's more to Chatham than just what we see on the surface. We wanted to show that we were, that we were able to give them the tools to be successful in the future. They came to our session to understand how we implemented deep learning activities within the curriculum, you know, how exactly did they fit into the standards, as well as to gather information on just how we were able to work together for leveraging digital.
So you guys have all heard the term leveraging digital a couple times throughout this presentation. I just wanna take a minute to talk to you about it and explain what it is. A lot of times when we think digital, it depends on when you grew up, when you were in school, it used to be where we used to go to computer class, and we had a keyboard, we learned how to type, that was it, that was leveraging digital. Leveraging leveraging digital has changed from the standard setting that they may be used to even five years ago, to what it is now. So it goes beyond computers, it's just a substitution for doing what the students are asked to do, such as writing a paper. Instead of writing it by hand, they type it. Leveraging digital doesn't mean substitution anymore. What it means is, students use technology to produce new tasks that were previously inconceivable. So one thing that's really great about the whole NPDL network is that we have actual rubrics that show us what these different elements look like. And one of the examples that we gave was the State Fair Project, and one of the Cs that we did for this was citizenship. So it has a whole aspect on what it looks like to leverage digital for this. So what it says is that, what it states is that students will now effortlessly use technology to improve their global environment and cultural understandings. They can clearly describe how technology enhances their products and solutions to the global challenges of equity, justice, and sustainability. They're then able to transfer and apply these understandings to new challenges or contexts, which I'll explain more when we talk about the State Fair Project.
And here's a close-up of our session, we are so proud that we did this.
We retweeted.
So here's a close-up of the session. We shared the fourth grade Valentine's Love Chap Challenge that was given as part of just a Valentine's celebration last year. We shared the mini golf course project that began just as a math project, and then we shared last year's State Fair Project, which combined geography and civic education. So, so again, quickly, I shared with them the Valentine's Day Love Chap STEM Challenge, and it also combined our energy unit, so it actually was part of our science. And we had extra time during a Valentine's party, so we decided to throw this out there. The task, using the given materials, the team was challenged to design and construct a love chap, which is, or was, a beautiful motorized robot that delivers a sweet treat to a human neighbor. And I think you saw some of that, one of the robots moving in the commercial. The deep learning developed as the kids evaluated themselves on a collaboration rubric, and with the additional assignment that asked kids to reflect on the question, "Are robots taking our jobs?" Another thing we all, we shared with pictures and and different assignments, the mini golf course. Harwich Elementary, fourth grade, had been using this forever, so they let me borrow this idea, and the kids had to come up with a proposal, a design, as part of a geometry unit. And again, you're given the scenario, the task, "A mini golf course owner has hired you to submit a sketch of a mini golf course hole. There are quite a few rules and regulations to follow, and the owner, Neil Down, is very picky about his designs." And so I gave him all the things, and of course, they had to have all sorts of angles and shapes, et cetera, et cetera, and they were given a packet. But the deep learning came as kids assess themselves again continually on a rubric and a follow-up reflection on how golf courses on the Cape actually affect their community. And then we shared the State Fair, and it's a part of the current event pathway, and it was a summative assessment. And, oh, so basically, of course, you're used to this fourth grade State Fair, where the kids are there to share the geography of a selected state, they have a board, they share all sorts of information about it, and try to have some materials to look at or touch or play with or whatever. We had modified this a couple of years ago in grade four to to make it also include civic education. And for those who know eighth, the eighth grade curriculum, it's a mini version of the Project Citizen, where they go, they look at a problem within that same state. They have to select, narrow down the problems. They have to select one problem and then come up with many solutions, solution ideas, but then they have to do some research behind that, narrow it down, and then present the solution to a governing body of that state, actually contact them, explaining, you know, nice state and all, but we found a couple of things, and we think we can solve this for you. So as they were going through, and for fourth graders to do this, it's marvelous. So those were some of the questions, and they're taken right off of the eighth grade Project Citizen curriculum, I guess, which problem affects more people. What criteria do we use to narrow the problem to one? And the teams were working on that. The audience there was most interested in this, because the fourth grade, you know, geography fair, thank you very much, or the State Fair is very, very common. Let's see, I think that might be it for that one. And then, oh, yep, I think I'm also there, sorry.
Okay, so one of the things that we added to the State Fair Project last year was a public service announcement. Going back to the NPDL rubric for citizenship, it does talk about understanding how things are, how, what they're experiencing, what they're witnessing affects others, and how like the whole global impact of it. So what the kids also did was they learned about how to create, how to send a message saying that there is something wrong, and there is something, something needs to be done about it, and here's a possible solution. So one of the things, so part of this that we focused on was the public service announcement. Now, the kids did not just make that as part of their speech, they actually had to, sorry, so basically, at the Learning Lab, the people who came to see what we did were also interested in the specific tools that we used. One of the big tools I like to use is movie, is using things for multimedia production. In the elementary school, I like using iMovie, because it's fairly simple for kids to pick up, and they all have their iPhones now, they all have their, they all have their iPads now. So they kind of understand the basic idea of how it works. So we brought it quite a few steps further. So they had to identify the problem, not just identify the problem, talk about it and write about it, but they had to create a persuasive essay as a rough draft. Then they had to develop a script, where it wasn't just, okay, this is the problem, this is what we should say, this is what you should do, and that's it. Then they had to research other video footage that talks about the problem. They had to look at other forms of multimedia. Then they had to use the whole actual technology end of it, where they had to use the appropriate copyright and fair use guidelines, where they had to understand, okay, now that I'm using the source, yes, it's a digital source, but I still have to cite it. but I still have to cite it, and I can only use a certain amount of it. And then, so, and then they had to complete screen recordings, identify the footage they needed, then use iMovie and QuickTime to cut and splice a footage to tell the story and provide the message for the public service announcement for the State Fair project. Now, as we're presenting this to other educators and principals and administrators from districts from all over the world, one of the big questions that we were asked as we're going through this is, how old are they? How old are your kids? Our high school kids are doing this, but how old are your kids? I'm like, fourth grade. So one of the big questions that came was asking, first, they, they wanted more. They wanted, what kind of tools do you use? How do you get to the point? And one of the big questions that was asked was, what is your scope and sequence? Like, how do you get them to be able to do those things? And the cool thing about it is that when the kids get started, they get very little guidance from me. I show them once. I have the students that catch on really quickly. They start, and then they teach their classmates. And then those classmates teach those classmates. So as they're doing all of this, not only are they expanding on what they're learning, but they're also teaching each other with it. So it was a lot of fun. So this is part of our professional growth experience, and now we're going to pass our presentation to the Westgate group.
Hello. I'm Nicole Camp. I'm a school psychologist at Chatham Elementary School and also here at the high school. I was part of this team. Come up here, please. Please. And we co-wrote a grant, which we proposed to Westgate Fund, and they approved it. And so we are very grateful to the Westgates for the generous funding for us to go abroad for professional development in a public school environment, but also for the opportunity that it afforded us in doing so. We went, you know, we proposed our goal, and really it was to learn more about deep learning, build knowledge, and understand this common language of deep learning, and to learn and see practices, deep learning practices, that facilitate educational growth and real student-centered learning. We loved the Learning Lab. We don't get to talk about it right now, but we're all happy to talk to any of you anytime about it. The people who were there, the deep disruptors, the thought leaders, there's all this deep learning language, were amazing. We had a speaker in Ottawa, which was what we're here to talk about, who's Professor Meredith at VC. We had Harvard professors come speak to us. We had people who are experts in their field at this conference, who then came to these site visits that we got to go to. So we worked with Jeanne Clinton, who's a neuroscientist, who knows a lot about adolescent development. It was very, very exciting and very cool. And we have thousands of our own pictures and slides and.
And we could only bring three.
And we could, we have, we have five minutes, all of us, to talk about this. So we went to the Learning Lab, and then we also had a day in Toronto where we went to UTS, which is the University of Toronto Schools. It was a high school. And we were part of a deep dive. And so it was really this sort of consultation model experience where we went in along with other administrators, teachers, educators from different countries, different teams. And we met with, in breakout groups, with this school, with the goal of answering their question, which was really focused on making observations about well-being. Their focus is well-being in their community. And what we had learned from the Learning Lab is that, you know, and we know this, I'm a psychologist, so I do know some of this. But we, we learned really that, you know, in order to learn effectively, students need to feel safe emotionally, physically, socially, and mentally. They need to feel significant, that they are worthy, and that their ideas are worth listening to. And really, this, this idea of purpose, knowing why they're here and that their contributions can make an impact. That theme, it was just threaded throughout all of our time in Canada. But this idea of purpose, and, you know, Jeanne Clinton had statistics on how few kids actually have a sense of purpose or can identify their sense of purpose. And so making meaning and helping them develop that is a big part of this pursuit. And so we observed that in this high school setting. And really, we were observers. And then at the end of the day, we met and we, we discussed our observations as they applied to the strengths to help the school leverage their strengths to improve instruction. And really, the observations, I think, that we all, you know, walked away with was these community partnerships, which is one of the four elements of partnerships in learning. And there were parents and caregivers there. There were, who had, you know, PTO records, but the students themselves have this language, this deep learning language. They have the tenets of citizenship and collaboration. And they, and they are critical thinkers, and they are themselves thinking about how to improve their learning and how to improve their capacity and their humanity and their own wellness. And so we got to hear a lot of that. And so it just showed that, and I think they were a few years in, it just showed that when you have this common language, and it's threaded throughout the, and embedded in the curriculum and threaded throughout their learning experiences, they have it as well. And it just becomes part of who they are in their vernacular, and it was really meaningful for us. From there, am I taking too much time? We went to Ottawa. We took a train to Ottawa. And we saw two schools. We, one in the morning one day and one in the afternoon. I think the one in the afternoon is the one to focus on right now. It was most similar to Chatham Elementary School. The first one was built sort of around this. So it had this beautiful common space, you know, learning environment is a part, one of the four elements of deep learning. And so it was built and designed with technology and, and storage, you know, and all of these things. I'll let Elise talk about that. But we, in terms of our observations of their community, we saw all kinds of different and enriched learning experiences. They, you could go to the next one, yeah. So I'm just going to talk about the space inquiry because we were all struck by it. This is at the second school, St. James School. We also have a slide deck from St. James that they put together just for us. They had two students giving us tours. It was wonderful. And this is taken from that. And this is this space inquiry in this classroom, this kindergarten classroom. And we walked in, and there were probably, I remember eight stations. We have, again, tons of photos. And every single student in the classroom was completely engaged. And these stations ranged from involving devices, where they were actually working on learning about space, to a table that had students and, I don't have the word, cards, in English and French. This was an emergent school. And so they were learning about the planets and astronauts, and they were learning the vocabulary of those things in French and in English. There was the standard, you know, kind of stand table, Playstation. And this little boy, very enthusiastically, was just like, this is the best thing ever. And he's like, I'm flying to Pluto. Oh, I don't, well, it's not a planet anymore, but I'm flying wherever, right? If you believe that. And so he was just so engaged and interesting and interested. And then you went to every other station, and they were all on task, right? Rare in a kindergarten classroom, but they were. They were all learning about space in some capacity and in a different modality. And it was very, very interesting to us. Do you want, do you want to say anything about the space inquiry? Okay, go ahead. Oh, and then outdoor learning is another theme that came up throughout the, the lab and our experiences in these schools, really pulling in the outdoors, which Dr. Millen alluded to earlier. You know, we have those opportunities, and we do take advantage of them. But, you know, the people from Finland came and they were telling us about how, you know, it's part of their day, every day, no matter what the weather, they're out there. And then these are tasks that are developed for outdoor learning. And this is an example of an activity that these kindergartners use, and some of the responses and questions and their own thinking on what they were doing. And so, you know, you can read that, but really, it's just engaging them. They're learning about nature. They're learning about whatever the, the standard that they need to be learning about. But they're doing it in a really collaborative way that's outside, and they're getting all of the benefits of those things. Okay, okay, this is you.
So I'm Megan Lampert. I'm the EL teacher at Chatham Elementary School. And again, I was one of the very lucky teachers to be able to travel to Canada thanks to Westgate for these site visits. And I knew I was pretty deep into this presentation, and you'd been talked at for quite a while. So I was really trying to come, come up with what struck me at these site visits more than anything else. And while there were amazing activities and great lessons, and the kids were producing wonderful projects, more than any of that, it was sort of the overall disposition, the demeanor of the kids that was just so striking. I saw students who were self-reliant, self-confident, independent. And this ranged across both schools and both grades, I mean, all grades. So the picture you're seeing now is of a kindergarten class, and in Canada, that's ages four and five. So while we were in this classroom, I observed these two kindergartners, four and five-year-olds, during an unstructured kind of playtime. And they were at an impasse. They were having an argument. And I watched it go on for several minutes. And never once, and there were a ton of adults in the room. We were visiting. There were other adults visiting. There were multiple teachers. Never once did either child look at an adult, threaten to go talk to an adult, or go speak to an adult to solve this problem. Both of them just kept communicating their problem to each other, their perspective on it, and trying to work through it. And I was like flabbergasted. This was like unbelievable to watch for me. And that was one of the things that really struck me. And as I was thinking about this, and thinking about all of the things that I'd seen, at the other end of the spectrum, we went to a grade five and six classroom. And they were doing an activity that I'm, I've seen before, where they were, they had identified a problem within their school community, and they were tasked with solving this problem. And there were constraints on, on what they could do and what they could use and all of, all of those things that they had to work within. But more than the project or their problem solving or any of that, what struck me was that when we went in to talk to them about it, they were so comfortable speaking about their project without relying on a memorized script or cue cards or anything else, so that when I asked questions of this group, they answered them. And they answered them so comfortably. Their communication was just so flexible and fluid, and they were completely at ease. And at times, they said, oh, we, we hadn't thought of that if I posed a question. And they were just so honest about it. And to me, those examples kind of speak to the promise of NPDL. Clearly, these schools have these six Cs embedded in their culture, and it's created these kids who, you know, we talk about 2032. We know we are not, we don't know what that's going to look like. But we know that self-reliance and self-confidence and ability to communicate and to persevere and problem solve and all of those things with other humans, they're going to have to do that. And it was, to me, it was that, the, the children themselves, the students themselves and their, their behavior, their demeanor, that was really the most striking.
My name's Elise Johnson-Dreyer. I'm one of the special education teachers at Chatham Elementary School. I want to show you this quick video. It might not work. Right? Anyway, apparently it won't work. Anyway, it would, it would have exemplified a point that I'm trying to make by these two pictures. These pictures are in classrooms in the schools in Ottawa, in both, one in each school. And you'll notice the parody of supplies and the organization. They, well, let's just go to the next slide, and you'll see a comparison. Nope, that's the wrong way. Do you want me to do it? Nope, got it. These are pictures I took in Chatham classrooms. The top-left one is my own, my own space. And it's not a judgment or, or saying that one way is better than the other. This is just what I saw. My own storage issue is less than aesthetic, and it may even prove to be distracting. What was interesting was how striking the, the differences were in the way they organized their space. What you see here, the desk setups that take up a big chunk of a classroom, were what, compared to what we saw in Ottawa, which was these very small communal spaces, which were not the focal point of teaching, but were available to use if the student wanted them. And the, when we sat down and talked to the teaching, the teachers and the administrators about that, it was one of the first things they focused on. And the, they were, the teachers were given the flexibility to bring in their own materials and design their space so it was comfortable for them and how they envisioned it to look. The storage issue goes back to really a, a lot more planning, so you know what you need and you have it available. And what you also would see would be sharing of materials, whereas even in my own room, every kid has their own pencil box, their own box of crayons, their own glue stick, their own pair of scissors. In Ottawa, there were communal boxes, and maybe there were three glue sticks and six kids, and they had to figure out whose turn it was. Where our kids know how to share, this was, I don't know, just strikingly different. These are hallway spaces that we saw in, in the schools in Ottawa, where, as Nicole mentioned, the first school we went to was designed with NPDL in mind. All of these communal, communal flexible spaces were built in. The storage issue with the boots in the hallway was just sort of cute because each room had its own, like Mudroom, where they actually hang their coats and put their backpacks, just like we do in our schools. But then the boots are in the hallway because there's less disorganization when they go to put them on. But the, in St. James School, which was an older building like Chatham, where they have taken underutilized spaces like the, the wall in the hallway and built communal teaching spaces where they would put up a problem and provide a space and presumably time for anyone to go and put up a thought, how to solve a math problem, answer a question about something another student had thought. Compared to what our hallways look like in Chatham, again, not the wrong way because it's working for us now, but certainly it looks different. The center picture is one of the favorite teaching spaces at Chatham. Thank you, Cindy Maycomber. That table is always in use by either a set of students or a student and a teacher. It was rare to get a picture without a student face at that table. But you could see bits and pieces of what we saw coming in and being used and being used a lot. They, one of the things you don't see, they also had all sorts of alternative seating, bicycle desks. I, I have in my classroom here, yoga balls for seats, mats on the floor. There's a lot of alternative options.
I'm Mia Kelo, a special education teacher. I'm going to wrap up Canada for you. If you know the four of us, we can talk. And being limited, and we know we don't have a lot of time, but we will present in much more depth to the Westgate, and we hope that you could access that presentation. It was fascinating. It was exciting. It was inspirational. And we could go on and on, and I'll try and stop saying how great it was. But it really was, you know, something to really inspire teaching. But some takeaways as we're wrapping up Canada. There is a direct connection from, with NPDL and the School Improvement Plan connected to equity. Every student should be able to say yes to the question, do I see myself in this school? Do I see myself in this classroom? And that is about putting a focus on culture, making sure that every student's culture, not just where they're from, the culture of how they've grown up, who they are, what their interests are, what they're passionate about, you know, do, do they feel that they are represented in their classrooms and in their school? It is, NPDL challenges us to move away from some traditional thought, from a teacher at the front of a classroom presenting information and children sitting back and receiving information. It challenges us to move to a team model where kids and teachers are working as a team. They're guiding their own instruction with the teacher making sure that all of the standards, you know, are taught within that focus using their passions. There's also a, a challenge to move away from the thinking of school is about teaching kids the skills they need for when they're out in the real world, to thinking of the fact that these kids are in the real world now. This is a real world. This is not, we're not preparing them for this, this twenty-year-from-now future. They're in real communities. They have real questions. They have real passions, and they can problem solve. And with that authentic, organic learning, you can use that passion to deepen the learning. The, I think one of our biggest takeaways when you, when I think about NPDL is NPDL is moving away from, excuse me, is moving away from improvement to innovation. Improving is what are we doing now and how can we do it better? Innovating is how can we do, how can I do what I'm doing now in a totally different way to create even bigger changes? You know, improvement is, improvement is, oh, shoot, I forgot the word I was going to use. Evolutionary. And innovation is revolutionary, right? When we were listening to the, what I would have called the keynote speakers in the program that Cindy showed, they called them disruptors. So I eye-roll as I'm apt to do because I think, oh, good, more, more lingo. And then by the end of the day, we were all disruptors because doing this type of teaching means. because doing this type of teaching means you really do have to change. It requires a change of mindset, a change of philosophy in some respects, a change of how you want to set up your classroom. And so we were really ready to start the revolution because if we're going to be revolutionary, we need to be disruptors, and we need to really have that brave front. And so we feel very excited to join our fellow Disruptees in moving forward NPDL at CES.
So we've been busy. And I told them 20 minutes. 20 minutes. But you can hear the passion just in their voices, and that's going to go into the classrooms for sure. But I do have just one more partnership that I do want to share with you. So weagle it out. You know, that's what we do. We weagle it out in elementary school so that you can focus a little bit. But we wanted to share that last month we expanded that partnership. You might have already heard about this. But our educational commissioner for the state, Dr. Riley, put out an all-call to districts and schools. And he wanted to see if educators in the Commonwealth would be interested in having a chance to rethink teaching and learning. He noted in his invitation, and we all kind of thought it was interesting, that the government is sometimes a latecomer to innovation. And in Massachusetts, he wants to turn that around. So he wanted to find schools that would lead and partner in the statewide effort in deeper learning. So Commissioner Riley admitted himself that he thought that maybe he'd get 30 to 40 schools that might be interested in that. And however, to his surprise, DESI received over hundreds of schools and districts that were interested in engaging in this work. So in the end, 500 schools applied to join the state in proposals, and we were one of them. We shared where we were, most of what we guess I gave you, like a 20-page proposal, but where we were, where we are now, and where we want to go. The state also asked us to propose a grant, a grant funding, a budget of what we would need to really bring this to scale. We've really been doing this out of the generosity and partnerships of others. You know, a small amount of this has actually come out of our budget. And so, but when he gave us an open opportunity to put in that budget, we did so. Katie will be happy. And so, and you heard it on the commercial, but we were selected as one of 21 schools in the state to participate in what he's calling the Kaleidoscope Collective Partnership. As part of this partnership, we will receive some monies, and we will be able to work with the state to not only share what we're doing, but also engage in more professional development and then also learn more in the future. So we're really excited about that. And I just want to publicly tell you, and you must have heard it by now, but I am so proud of this team. So when they applied for this, and I hope they know that their willingness to, like, their ability, I can't even explain how many ways I'm proud, but I'm proud of the risks that they've taken, the willingness to take, to accept failure, because we failed a lot along the way here this year, their ability to generate excitement throughout our school so that everybody is on board now. It's just amazing. And I hope they know that when Commissioner O'Reilly shared with us when we were receiving the award, the understanding that we were part of this collective, that we were described as one of the 21 most forward-thinking and innovative schools in the Commonwealth, and that he wanted to take what we were doing to scale throughout the state. So these guys need to know that all their efforts over the past year matters, and not only for our students, but for all the students in the Commonwealth. So I want you to know that. So it takes a village, obviously. We're going to go back to the beginning. And inside that middle circle, obviously, you've got that, what we just all talked about. But it takes all of us. It takes the school conditions to remain, to move forward on this. It takes the district conditions to be supportive of this work. And it also takes systems to be supportive of this. And, you know, I hope it's clear for now that we need to value and support them. They're moving this forward, okay? And that we need to make sure that there's good news because you are already doing that. If you look at your strategic plan and all the work we did on the strategic plan over the last two years, if you look at the words up there, you guys get a gold star. You are already there. You're supporting this work, okay? And we appreciate that, and we hope that we still receive that support in the future. So I want to thank you, and we're going to leave you with the way we started with our children. And we're going to leave you with their message about what they imagine schooling should be and with a special invitation to you.
Picture the progress as young learners write goals and keep track of their progress as they recuggle. Picture the progress as young learners tackle new and meaningful challenges and then turn ideas into action. Picture the progress as young learners work with others and share their ideas with an audience. Picture the progress as young learners are engaged and excited about learning and expressing themselves creatively. And picture the progress as young learners engaged in the world we live in and make an impact in our community. We know that the world is changing, so preparing students for an ever-changing world will require a new way of thinking from all of us. We believe that the best way to prepare young learners for the future is to offer learning that is interactive, relevant, collaborative, and directly linked to the grade-level learning standards. Sitting, listening, and repeating information is outdated and will simply not do for our students. We want to dive deeper. Our learners need to create, connect, and use information in a variety of creative ways. That's why Chatham Elementary School is developing a deep learning approach to education. To prepare our learners for the future, we focus on helping learners develop global competencies, citizenship, character, communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and creativity. The world is shifting, and here at CES, we are leading that change. Our school was selected as one of the most innovated schools in the state recently. We know how important the future of education is for our community and our children. You are invited to our night of deep learning at CES on January 16th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We will develop a shared understanding of what deeper learning is, what it should look like, and how it will benefit CES learners. Students are encouraged to attend as there will be roomfuling activities, including STEM topics, art integration, and real-life problem-solving. All who attend will be entered into a raffle for the chance to win prizes. We hope to see you there.
So thank you for honoring us with so much of your time tonight that we really wanted to share with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Millen, and to the entire team. Your presentation was probably one of the best that I've seen in my years here on the school committee. Certainly inspiring, certainly innovative, certainly every minute mattered of that presentation. It was phenomenal, and it's just so exciting to see our elementary school and hopefully both of our elementary schools heading in this direction. It's definitely fast-forwarding things. So thank you all very much. And I would open it to the school board for questions and comments. Terry?
Just a question and a comment. I'd like to echo what Jackie just said. How many years has the deep-dive process been around at the elementaries and moving upwards throughout the world?
So deeper learning is not new. I mean, these theories that they're built on is, you know, go way back, all the way to Montessori and Dewey, and, you know, there's a lot of, this is not new. The formalized process of Polin's project started in Canada in around 2008, 2004, 2008. And then NPDL has been out about since then. You know, it's developed and obviously grown and grown and grown. Our hub, what we're using, that New Pedagogies of Deeper Learning, is the resource bank for us. But this is not really new. It's been around for a long time. It's just the shift in how we educate children. I mean, we know our system of education was built for factory-industrial age so that our workers in the United States could create things for making cars in, you know, industrialized nations. It's changed. And unfortunately, we still have Bells. We still work on a eight-to-three system. We work on 180 days. We work, you know, a lot of the things in the industrial system have stayed the same, and we're trying to break those things down so that we can meet the needs of the children of this world now.
My comment. Thank you very much. I, my whole career, I've been in schools. And the last 25 minutes reminds me of the scanning the Golden Globes on screen from TV. But to see those professionals get up on stage, you'd be so modest and yet thrilled with their product, these actors and producers. Kind of like going to an excellent movie here on the Cape and after you leave, you're still talking about it. It's not usual on a winter doldermy-type night that I come out. And you touched my passion about how kids grow into a whole world of their own. So I thank you for that because I haven't heard a lot of, someone used the word flabbergasted and your passion. These aren't typical classroom, Room 101, conversation amongst colleagues. So someone said, you know, this whole industrial age and egg crates and how we and all of us probably at our age went through learning. And yet, if you find a skill to create dis-ease in people, it infects them. And I could sense, listening to you, that's what happened up in Toronto. And your process and how you begin to create dis-ease amongst your colleagues in the next several years will cause this, no matter how you interpret this learning, to just be far more exciting, first of all, for the, not so much for the learners, but you as learners, as adults who are really growing up because none of us really stop. So I want to thank you for that. You know, welcome to, come back and let us know each year how this thing begins to spread because it has some great sense in it.
20 minutes.
It was worth our weight. Sharon?
Well, I could take a lot of time in comments and questions, but suffice it to say that I think that I have never seen a group of staff be this engaged and excited about anything. And I think that that translates to kids being excited and engaged.
Mary?
This just excites me all around because I'm in the field. So, you know, some of the things that I heard you say that is really, I can just, I just know that it goes straight to the student learning is, you know, the cross-content area learning, the movement in hands-on activities, the choice that empowers the students, that you're thinking about that constant change, and that means that you're reflecting all the time. And the student self-evaluation, I mean, that's just empowering for them. It's just so exciting. And I know that Robin and I have spoken about it a little bit, but, you know, I'm excited to come back and see more. I do have a question that, you know, is going to draw us down off of this really exciting time. But you could see in the video, you could see in the photos that, you know, there's definitely an increase in engagement. Are you seeing a decrease in behaviors and distracted students and work refusal and things like that? Are you seeing that already, or are we too new in the process?
Yes, and. So it depends, right? So somebody used the word disruptors. So this is a disruptive process, for sure. You know, we are seeing the way that children are interacting and working with each other and trying to solve problems differently. So we have to become a little more tolerant of that purposeful struggle and also that kind of disagreement and stuff like that. And it, what we're also seeing, you know, so I can get the data. I mean, I am seeing lower referrals generally, you know, like just those kind of low-level things where just kids get, I call them it'shka bibles, and then they act out because they've been sitting in a chair for, you know, 20 minutes or whatever. And you guys have been doing it for over an hour. But it's, you know, and I can get you some hard data on that. What we're also noticing, though, that our tolerance for that disruption has to be okay, right? So we have to let them argue, and I think Megan said it, Ms. Limeport said it perfectly. You know, the kids aren't even looking for an adult, you know. Oftentimes, I get referrals or we get behavioral think sheets and stuff like that because of the fact that, you know, a kid said, "Oh, Johnny did this," or da-da-da, you know, and that kind of thing. So we're learning and growing too. So we're hoping that. But you have to come into this building when this is going on because there are kids everywhere. I mean, they're pulling boxes out of stuff. I mean, and again, this is all standards-based. Don't think this isn't, you know, we're teaching the standards. But they're trying to decide how they're presenting their mastery. So, you know, they're in the garbage. They're using the custodians. They're, you know, marching down to me. I sat with a group today that wanted to know the history of mathematics, and they're somewhere, I must have, they must have known, like, I did taught math at some point, and they want to sit down and have lunch with me, you know. So those kind of things, that's what we're seeing, that kind of engagement, which is lessening some of that other stuff that their minds could be doing to keep themselves engaged.
So you're taking a risk. You're taking a chance.
I can imagine what it looks like. Thinking of the SEL part of it, how is it affecting the staff? How do you feel working with each other? How do you feel going to school every day?
I can say that I'm a big... Sorry. One of the things that I'd like to say is I have been incredibly inspired by some of my colleagues. I know that I've kind of invited myself into their classroom with my children. And the kindergarten has seen what the fourth graders are doing, and they come back to the room and say, "We want to do things like that too." And it has made me want to be like some of my colleagues that I admire so much. And I work very closely with many of the people that are up here. I think we're a small school, but we're close-knit, and I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's some, like, willingness to be, like, vulnerable and, like, self-deprecating at times. I've certainly, like, walked into the room next to me and said, "Well, this stinks. Like, this was horrible." And like, sort of looking at how to reframe things and having that willingness to do that. But the fact that now, like, we're sort of all on board makes it, you know, we're all in it together kind of a thing. So there's like a vulnerability, but it's allowing everyone to sort of have that self-reflection to get better.
Terry?
Just as a postscript, I have a daughter who's kindergarten through 12 in Howard Schools, who's present we speak teaching in Hong Kong. So folks, you've just given me a whole bunch of stuff. The next time we get on FaceTime to talk to Courtney regarding a deep dive in her learning.
I just want to add one thing. So, you know, in the, can I, I'm old. I feel like I'm old sometimes when I see, but I've been doing this a long time. And, you know, we used to go in our classrooms, shut the door, and did our thing, right? That's what we did. What we've seen emerge out of this is, we call it the Welcome Mat. And basically, teachers put up on this board, it's kind of like pineapple, if you know pineapple. But they put on this board and say, "I'm trying something." And they can say, either they want feedback on how it went or just come in and observe, you know, for your own development. And they go through, you know, a walkthrough, and they go in. And I mean, I think all of the, you know, people, and the Welcome Mat goes out, and it tells what time, and they're just sharing. And they are soliciting feedback to say, "Wait, how'd that go? What did that look like? What were the kids saying?" You know, those kind of things are happening differently.
Tina?
Yeah, I just, so many great things that I could say. But I wanted to just take a moment because the Westgate Foundation is where the funding came from. Is that correct for all of this, the training?
No. So the Westgates funded the exemplar school visits.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So Westgate doesn't fund, like, conferences or anything like that. So we, as a district, sent them to Toronto. And then to extend their stay, Westgate provided them the extended days to go up to the exemplars.
Okay.
The other, like, New Pedagogies of Deeper Learning, there is a fee for that, and there is a membership type because the clusters come together, and there's different clusters. And that's the cluster we're in. We've been writing South Coast Educational Collaboratives Cluster. They love our team. They're getting, you know, help, you know, professional development for their team through our team, and we're getting professional development from them. So it's almost like a, I don't know if that's illegal, but a bartering-type thing where they're just inviting us in to be professional partners.
That's good. Again, the point I was going is this, when you invest in education or training or whatever, I mean, what we're seeing here is an ROI, as you would call it in the business world, a return on investment. And I just love it. However it came, from the Westgate or the funding or whatever, it's good to see where the money goes and what comes out of it. So I really enjoyed this presentation. So I really enjoyed this presentation and so I'm, I'm reminded of making that investment in, in this. So I just wanted to touch on that.
I can provide the school committee also the grant request that, you know, we did. We won't know what final dollar the state will provide to us, but again, I don't like to build budgets on grants, you know, because eventually, you know, we have to be committed as a system, you know, to continue on.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Especially if we're going to scale.
Exactly. And I agree with you, but I'm, as a grant writer, whoever wrote the grant, you did a really good job for at least that part of it. All of it. Yeah. Great.
And I just want to say, sorry, um, that, hello, I've got a few minutes. So. I have a shirt. We've got about, oh, anyway. Uh, this is a perfect example because again, there's, this is not luck that we all love what we're doing. It's our leader. It's our fabulous leader. She created thee. She's more enthusiastic than any of us for, um, for this, what, 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 this concept. And so it spreads to us and so we want to do nothing but support her and her efforts and enthusiasm. So just wanted to remind you that our leader has been fabulous for us.
Yes, it's wonderful world, you know. You just tell them yes.
Dr. Carpenter?
I, I think the one thing that I wish I could have captured from yesterday when I went to your, your, uh, yesterday was the ribbon cutting for the playground inside because of the snow. But, um, but at the end or part of the ribbon cutting ceremony was also Robin and her staff sharing with the students, uh, this, this opportunity for them to come back to school at night and get involved in deep learning. And the excitement in the room, it, I can't even convey how excited the kids were. I mean, these teachers for those kids were rock stars. And, you know, if, if I had, if I had kids screaming, you know, because they wanted to be locked in a library like, like Ms. Ware got, you know, I, I would have loved teaching biology every single day and more and more of it.
Only getting out by binary.
And, you know, so it, you know, it, I, I look at it that happiness is infectious and, and I really think that they are doing a great job as a team of educators to really build that happiness within the, the school and, and to spread, you know, hopefully it spreads, oh, district and beyond. But it was, it was really impressive. Um, I'm going to have to borrow some child so I can go to, uh, the deep learning thing and I, I'm not sure if I'm still banned in Ms. Maycomer's room. The, uh, the gumball machine is, uh, is something I'm very interested in building, but if not, maybe I'll have to gravitate to when egg drop.
You do not need a child to come to family night. You just need to bring yourselves because we have adult sessions that we will be engaged in and then the adults will be joining the children to engage in those sessions as well. So come along, Dr. Carpenter.
But great job, team.
Yes, very good job.
Thank you.
Very good job. Yeah. Okay, um, we bumped it, we're going back to it. Um, this is the F-121 draft budget approval. We had, um, reviewed the last draft on the December 12 meeting, um, and at this point no changes have been made and Dr. Carpenter is going to talk very briefly about the draft budget. And again, this is just, are you not talking or you are talking?
I'll, I'll.
You'll talk from there?
Yeah.
Okay. This, again, this is just approving the draft budget, which we've already seen and it was presented on December 12.
So Jim's just going to, um, to get the, uh, a short little PowerPoint, uh, to project up there. As, as Katie and I were, uh, were chatting earlier today, you know, I, I'm like in the process of starting to put together the PowerPoint for our, our annual budget forum that we, uh, that we do. And, uh, and I was, and I think in my head, I just want to keep jumping, jumping ahead to that big presentation. And then there's this complete frustration that I have, um, that there continue to be some unknowns that we have at this point every single year that we, we know are going to impact what the budget looks like. I think the really, the, the good news for our community and our taxpayers is that this is probably the smallest budget increase that we've had as a school district since I've been here. It's, uh, if I'm correct, it's a 2.27% budget increase. For the families and students, it is a level-staffed budget. It's a, it's, it's a level service budget with, uh, with strategic initiatives that are built in and we, and, and we'll kind of briefly talk about what we're, what we're doing, but we, uh, I think I had mentioned at one of our past school committee meetings, um, we have built up an appreciable balance of excess and deficiency by, you know, by properly managing the school district. So we, you know, uh, excess and deficiency, if it bumps up over 5%, uh, we have to make sure that we don't have more than 5% of our budget that is able to build up in reserves. So, so given the, where the excess and deficiency is, we, I had mentioned that we wanted to do what we had done a few years back when we brought Math &amp; Focus into the district, but this time use some of that excess, as excess and deficiencies a one-time thing to address our elementary ELA curriculum. Um, so, you know, so we have that in there. So Jim, if you want to just click, if you can just kind of click on the slides for me. So just, uh, high-level overview and, and this will, will kind of, will update this as things become more clear. It's level-staffed, maintains all services and any program that's currently in the FY20 budget. It's important to know that at the moment, the minimum required contributions have not been released. They come out with the governor's budget later this month. But because there is an appreciable number of Chatham students, uh, there's just a decrease, a decrease in kids in Chatham and there has been a slight increase in number of children in Harwich this year, we can anticipate, as has happened in past years, that that's going to play its way out in the minimum required contribution. So, so when we say the budget increase is a 2.27% budget increase, it's going to have different impacts on the two communities as those numbers fall into place when the governor's budget gets released. Okay, so there, there are a lot of variables that are unknown that are going to become more clear as time goes on. So as I said, the state, you know, what, what state aid is, what that minimum required contribution is, is unknown. Um, you know, we're, you know, we, when we develop the draft budget and, you know, we, you know, we go through a process of just sort of presuming that state aid is going to be where it was last year and generally that's a, a good, safe assumption. The minimum required contributions, you know, we can, we can do a draft assessment for Harwich right now and we can do a draft assessment for Chatham. But until those minimum required contributions come out, that draft assessment is really, you know, just based on last year's numbers and, and we know that an enrollment shift is going to tip it, we just don't know how much. So, you know, so our foundation enrollments, yeah, the, you'll notice at the very end of those lines, um, Harwich is the green one, Harwich continues to have their foundation enrollment, keeps ticking up ever so slightly. Chatham's foundation enrollment keeps ticking down ever so slightly. I want to emphasize that the, the graph axis is, starts at 25%. So it's not the Chatham enrollments going down to zero. Chatham Elementary School will remain open. Dr. Miller. So, so there, 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 the three-year, the, the assessment is ultimately based on a three-year rolling average of the foundation enrollment and that has a slight shift towards, has I think about a 0.9 shift towards Harwich, um, in this, uh, in this year's budget. So in terms of just the guidelines and assumptions that we go on each year, um, we, you know, we are, you know, trying to make sure that we move forward the strategic objective. Uh, we are trying as much as possible to stay within reasonable class sizes. Um, the, you know, this budget's built around having elementary classes that averaged over the grade should be 18 plus or minus one at the elementary level, 19 plus or minus two at the middle and high school levels, which, you know, is, is rather surreal if you look at schools, you know, schools, you know, throughout the country. Um, and we also want to make sure that whatever we do, that our budget is going to fit within the fiscal wherewithals of the two towns. So, uh, the budget itself anticipates level enrollment. We, uh, we know that our high school population next year starts to increase. Uh, there's the bumper crop of kids that are sitting at seventh grade that are going to roll up here to eighth grade next year. While the high school's going to be growing, our elementary schools are slowly starting to see fewer kids. Uh, and that's, that's not because of school choice, it's just, there's just fewer kids being born on Cape, you know, on Cape Cod. And, you know, so it's, so it's, it's a, it's a level, we anticipate level enrollment, uh, but where the kids are is going to shift slightly. So we, you know, it's, it's a level-staffed budget, but we are going to divert one FTE, uh, at Harwich Elementary School and, and use that FTE resource to go and help offset the increase of eighth graders at the high school next year. Um, as we were putting this, this together, momentarily we're presuming that chapter 78 is, is, uh, is, is, you know, staying the same, but year after year it, it tends to increase and that's, that's a safe assumption. Momentarily, uh, we're, we're presuming that, uh, you know, that the minimum required contributions shifts, you know, when we, you know, do our little sort of draft projections aren't, aren't changing, but we know when the governor's budget comes out that they're likely to change and they're likely going to change with costs heading, heading Harwich's way just by that enrollment shift. Health insurance in this budget, um, was, uh, is at 5% is what, where we're carrying it. That's what, when, and conversations that we've had with our management group that, when we meet with the town managers, um, and have heard back at least, you know, sort of the, the pulse of where Cape Cod Municipal Health Group is, 5%, which in past years we have been carrying a 10% contingency for health insurance, but this year, uh, they feel 5% is a good place to be at. So, um, you know, so we don't, we don't have a spot there. It's, it's not like we're carrying 10% and there's this, oh, if it comes in at 5%, suddenly there's, there's going to be some, you know, a big savings in the, in the budget. So, you know, so we have 5% for the health insurance. The transportation assessment, um, is going to slightly shift towards Harwich by, by half a percent. Um, again, the transportation piece of the assessment is based on how many students from Harwich attend schools here at Chatham and how many school, uh, uh, at Chatham and at Montemoy and how many kids from Chatham attend classes here at Montemoy. The operations and debt aspects of the budget are based on foundation enrollment, which is the students from Harwich that go to any sort of public school other than Cape Tech and the students from Chatham that go to any public school except Cape Tech. Because all of, if you go school choice out or if you go to a charter school, we're financially responsible for you. So they show up in that part of the budget. Uh, we continue to carry, um, a $100,000 commitment towards OPEB. Uh, I think probably at one of our upcoming school committee meetings, it would be good for us to go and do an OPEB presentation to you in terms of what that OPEB liability is. Um, $100,000 is a drop in the bucket compared to what the, the growing OPEB liability is out there. And I'm, and this is something that both towns are wrestling with, you know, what do we do, um, as municipalities to start funding this? We need to make sure that, that we're part of these conversations because, you know, while the towns may come up with some strategy, you know, you know, to, you know, you know, there are some communities that, you know, have even done overrides to fully fund OPEB, you know, at, you know, at this point in time and then to budget so that, you know, so that OPEB doesn't grow after that, you know, we don't, you know, we don't have the ability to go have it override on our own or to, you know, raise a tax or to, you know, say, okay, there's a new revenue source that's coming on in town, let's dedicate that towards, you know, towards OPEB. You know, we get our, you know, we get our funding from, you know, from our two towns and need to make sure that, that our OPEB needs are addressed when, you know, when this, you know, when these conversations are happening at, in both Harwich and Chatham. Uh, finally, uh, last year, to come in at a reasonable budget number in Harwich, we, uh, as a group decided we were going to reduce or eliminate, uh, for the year, funding, additional funding for the stabilization account. Uh, this budget, as it currently stands, restores $50,000, a $50,000 commitment towards stabilization. The stabilization account is an account the district can use if something big that you would have to typically borrow for goes awry during a, you know, during a, a fiscal year, um, you know, be it a rooftop unit on a top of a building, a portion of a roof, a freezer in one of the cafeterias goes down or, you know, or even a truck that you would go plow on a day like yesterday. Uh, it's, it's a fund that the, that the school district can go to, to again stabilize big purchases and, and you can imagine if, as a district, we don't tap into this over the, over a number of years, when you have a really big expense, like say, at some point a decade off or so, an artificial turf field will need to get replaced. You have a, an account that has amassed, that you can help defray the cost on that. So it's not as big of an ask of our taxpayers when we have to go and replace big things. That's, that's the intention of a stabilization account. Uh, our district enrollment right now, uh, in terms of the kids that are attending classes, 65% Harwich, 21% Chatham, 14% Choice. The, uh, the enrollment trend for the district, uh, again, this is not a, a graph that has zero as a, as a bottom axis, just if I, if I went and had, had it go from 2,000 to zero, it almost looks like a flat line, you know, so you have to kind of blow it up to see what's happening. You know, so, so our, our enrollment tends to go up and down depending, you know, depending on the year, you know, you have, and it can, it can vary, it can vary one year to another, you know, by almost, you know, by almost 50 kids. Um, as, as I said, we're anticipating that this, this, since FY17 has been fairly flat and we anticipate a fairly stable enrollment going into FY21. Class sizes that, uh, that I anticipate based on the kids that we currently see at our, you know, at our grade levels, um, you know, we're, you know, we'd anticipate that our class sizes there at Chatham Elementary School are going to be somewhere between, you know, 15.3 and 17 kids. At Harwich Elementary School, we anticipate the class sizes are going to be between about 18 and 20. Um, at middle school, uh, the bumper crop of kids is, is leaving and heading up to the high school. Uh, we're going to see class sizes there in the, in the 17 to 20 range. And at the high school, that big cohort of seventh graders that comes up to eighth graders, which has always had, as they've moved their way from kindergarten up through the system, had relatively class, large class sizes, is going to be about 21, um, when they're in their core academics, uh, as they spread out into other, other classes. I, I'm sure that that will actually, uh, drop a little bit, um, in, in terms of what it really looks like in, in eighth grade classrooms next year. And, you know, then just in terms of the academic program that we have, uh, ninth through 12th grade, uh, generally those classes, you know, range between, uh, between 15 to 18 for the vast majority of them. Um, and then I, just a note, we, uh, we have five sections currently, uh, at, uh, at kindergarten and first grade. At Harwich Elementary, we anticipate those five sections to continue into second grade where there's currently six sections. That's where we anticipate one FTE being reduced in the FY21 budget and we would take that FTE resource and reallocate it to the high school where we're seeing sort of an increase of students on that end. of an increase of students on that end. Out of, out of district, uh, last year, when we were, when we were doing initial budget conversations, uh, we knew that there was going to be that, what's, what's projected up there, a, a three student increase, I think it was, in the number of out of district students, uh, who had, and, and they each had some pretty, you know, pretty high cost associated with them. Uh, we know that we have a couple of students that are currently outplaced that will be aging out, you know, so when you, you know, when you get to age twenty-three, they age out of the system. So we know that we're going to have a couple of students that are aging out that have some pretty significant costs, so we're going to have some savings there. But we also know that we have other students that, that are currently with us who need placements. So we anticipate, uh, we anticipate this, uh, our, our out of district, um, will, uh, will probably, uh, be in a better place than it was last year. Um, and, uh, but, but it's still, uh, fluid. I was, uh, talking to Melissa McGuire earlier today and she anticipates that by our next school committee meeting, that, uh, that the, uh, the meetings that, uh, that, uh, our, our special educators are having with, uh, with families will sort of give us, be at a better, a better place of really narrowing in on, uh, the, uh, the total dollar. But, uh, but there's, there's a, at least in the current draft budget for FY twenty-one, there's, you know, there's about a two hundred plus thousand dollar decrease in out of district costs. Um, and hopefully, knock on wood, that it, it, it stays heading in that direction. Um, uh, school choice and, uh, charter school choice. Uh, the green line up top is school choice in the Montomoy. Uh, since FY seventeen, we continue to see more families that are interested in filling spaces that we have available in classrooms, as I said philosophically. In past years, I'm not somebody who wants to go use school choice to grow the district because if I fill classrooms with students, you know, if I, if I bring in twenty students into fourth grade, there's not, you know, at five thousand dollars a student, we're, we'd actually be expending more money in staffing costs than what would be coming in. So we, you know, we have focused as a district on, on looking at how much space do we have in classes to have them still be reasonably class, you know, keep the class sizes reasonable, but to fill empty seats within, within the classrooms, within our guidelines, um, and using school choice that way. So we're very, uh, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're very thoughtful about how many students we bring in and at what grade levels each year. Um, school choice heading out, you'll notice since FY eighteen has dropped off appreciably. We're, you know, we're down well over fifty students in terms of students that are heading out. Each one of those students used to have been taking five thousand dollars apiece with them. So again, that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars that isn't leaving our district and they're not leaving the district because they like the programs that we've got in place here. In terms of charter school out, uh, there was a slight increase in the charter school out, uh, a year ago. Uh, that's fallen back down. Um, a- and sometimes, uh, some, uh, again, I, I think the overall trend of that line, it's, it's fairly flat and some of the, some of the charter school out is rather random. You know, you know, do, you know, do, you know, do students get, you know, there's, you know, lotteries to get into Lighthouse or to get into Sturgis and, you know, do, you know, do you have students by chance that are getting in and possibly seeing that bump up? But we're not seeing families fleeing to charter schools from the district. If anything, uh, this year, there's an indication that we have, uh, there's, I think, six fewer kids that are, uh, left at charter, you know, six fewer kids left for charter school this year than last and each one of those takes with them over fifteen thousand dollars apiece. You know, so again, significant savings there for us. Uh, just some budget, things that offset the budget. So, uh, first thing is the excess and deficiency, I think, might be the next slide, Jim. So, uh, since last we met, our excess and deficiency has been certified. So our excess and deficiency is currently two million ninety-five thousand two hundred eighty-one, which is over five percent by twenty-two thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars. Um, so, uh, we, I, I think when, when, when I first got here and Katie and I were sort of thinking about the future, you know, we had talked about, you know, seven years out, we wanted to go and build our excess and deficiency so we'd be at four percent. Well, we're seven years out now, Katie, and, and we're, you know, we've, we've met, we've met four percent and then some. So we're in a place where we can use that money for something good. And, and, you know, so we, we are using in this budget, we're offsetting our budget by five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which reduces the assessments to both towns by using that excess and deficiency. But then what we are proposing is that we use a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that excess and deficiency to purchase an ELA curriculum at the elementary school. Uh, we're still working out the logistics of what that ELA curriculum will be, much the same way that we brought a Math in Focus presentation to you three years ago. Uh, when Mark finishes the process, he's going through with elementary teachers regarding the ELA curriculum. They'll bring that here to you to do a presentation of where we want to go. So we'll, we'll kind of bring that back to this group. But, you know, but this is, you know, the thinking is that we'll use some of the excess and deficiency to go address this, you know, this strategic initiative. Uh, in terms of school choice, uh, as, as you noticed in the graph, the, the school choice numbers, uh, have, yeah, have been tracking in a positive direction. Um, so we feel that we have, uh, we've, we have resources coming in, uh, to spend additional money from school choice revenue to offset the FY twenty-one budget. So there's a hundred thousand dollars more of school choice revenue used in offsetting the FY twenty-one budget. And I think the next one's circuit breaker. So, circuit breaker, uh, we're using, uh, almost fifty thousand dollars less of circuit breaker. And of course, one of the reasons we're using less of circuit breaker is that we're having less students that we anticipate going out. So there's less of a need for that special education out of district cost. Um, we do want to kind of point out one thing. Last year, when we were talking about budgets, we were anticipating that we were going to receive, uh, this extraordinary relief, you know, uh, that we, you know, we knew the out of district costs, uh, increase, increase that we, that we were seeing was so high that the state, uh, would go and step in and offset, uh, some, you know, some of these additional costs. So we got extra, we got the extraordinary relief last year. I would not anticipate us seeing that, uh, that extraordinary relief coming in this year, particularly when I'm telling you that our out of district costs are heading in a downward Uh, in terms of tuitions going out, I mean, it's, it's still a big number. You know, there's, there's, there's almost two point, you know, five million, it's two point four three seven million dollars of tuition heads out. Um, it's about half, uh, school choice tuitions heading out at roughly five thousand dollars apiece. And then, uh, and then another one point two million dollars in charter school tuitions heading out at, you know, at about a little over fifteen thousand dollars apiece. Uh, as I mentioned, the, uh, the big strategic initiative here is to use a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from excess and deficiency as a one-time cost. Because we're using it from excess and deficiency in the way that we put together our assessment sheets, it would actually be, uh, it, it would be something that we're doing outside of the budget. So we, uh, when we put together our assessments, we, you know, we have sort of how much money everything's going to cost, uh, and then we back out, uh, you know, back out the excess and, you know, or we, we subtract from that the, you know, the excess and deficiency we're using. So this would just be a transaction that would be happening out of our excess and deficiency co, uh, excess and efficiency account, not coming out of the budget proper. Um, and then if you take the budget that has been in your, uh, school committee packets now for, I think, three school committee meetings in a row, and you go to the last page of it and the last line on the, uh, left-hand side, uh, gives you the total budget cost. It's a forty-three million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollar budget. Um, and, uh, but, uh, and of course Katie's shaking her head at me because what we, what we do when we, when we do a, uh, when we put this together is we subtract off, again, the way, it's the way we do our assessments to the two towns. So I, I don't want people in, uh, on a finance committee to look at this and say, oh my gosh, it's a, it's a forty-three million. We, and not only do we subtract off the excess and deficiency, but we also subtract off, uh, from the total budget, the school choice money that we're using to offset that and we back off the circuit breaker money that we, uh, that we're using in this, which comes to, uh, it puts us at like forty-one thousand, or forty-one million. Um, uh, again, uh, it, it's, the total, the, the total assessed budget, um, is going to be a two point two seven percent increase over FY twenty, um, while using excess and deficiency at a hundred and twenty thousand to go support an ELA strategic initiative. Uh, and again, getting all the way back to this, uh, uh, two point two seven, uh, budget increase isn't going to play out as a two point two seven assessment increase. I anticipate, uh, Chatham being, seeing an assessment increase that's going to be a little bit less than that and that Harwich is going to see an assessment increase a little bit more than that, given how I anticipate the minimum required contribution swing happening once the governor's numbers are released. And I believe they're supposed to come out the twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth?
Second.
Twenty-second? So, uh, so we should, uh, pull together our finance subcommittee, uh, after that, after that happens to, um, uh, to a, see what the impact is going to be and what do we need to do, um, you know, when it comes to assessment.
Katie Isarnio, business manager. I just want to add to Dr. Carpenter's, um, presentation a little bit about the process. Cause I think it's important for everybody, um, at this, at the table here and in the public, that this is draft, and I always say this is draft with a capital D. There are going to be a lot more conversations that take place about this budget and if I'm not mistaken, when we look at the budget timeline, I believe there is a budget discussion at every school committee meeting from now until probably town meeting. So there'll be, and this is a draft, but per the regional agreement, we must submit to our towns and to the libraries by January fifteenth, a draft budget, which we've done every year. Um, and that way, it's out there in the, in the community. It's early in the process because as we, Dr. Carpenter mentioned, we don't have a lot of important numbers like chapter seventy dollars as well as minimum contribution, uh, except for health insurance. So though, it's still a work in progress. I don't, a lot of the data that we presented, that Dr. Carpenter presented tonight, really is just really the demographics of the district and, you know, framing it around, given this first draft, this is how we would offset it with these dollars. But it's, it, there's still a little bit of ebb and flow that we will have more conversations with the finance subcommittee of the school committee as well as the public, um, and, and processing. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that this is, it's not a done deal right here as it sits. There's still lots of conversations that still take place and other presentations as well. Um, and what I just want to add to that piece, which is really, um, a, a nice transaction took place yesterday. One of the members of the Harwich Finance Subcommittee came to my office and we met for a couple of hours because he was really interested in the education budget and, uh, his name is John Chor, Chori. Um, and we, we, we talked about OPEB and Barnstable Assessments and, and, uh, school choice and circuit breaker and a lot of really exciting things, just like what's going on at Chatham Elementary School. It's an exciting conversation, it truly is. Um, and, and he, I put together a packet of information for him and what I've done in your, um, packets tonight is included what I will be sending to him tomorrow. So if anybody asks you about a particular question, that's the information that I have. But it's, it's early in the process, um, and there's lots of conversations still to be had, but, you know, we're just, we have a, a timeline that we must follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Dr. Carpenter.
And then in your, in your packets, Katie put together everything that she provided, uh, John at, at their meetings so that you've got, you know, you've got all the, the questions he was asking and, and the information that we'll be providing, uh, him to take back to his board.
All set? Okay, great. Um, Terry?
A couple of questions on, on the draft. Very clear, Scott, thank you. In reverse order, the hundred and twenty thousand out of the N D to help the advance of a ELA in the elementary. If I recall, three years ago, the math initiative at the elementary was somewhere around three hundred thousand? So my rough question, that one twenty is to assist, what amount of money that we're going to come out of other funding to make this happen for the ELA?
So I, and, and Mark, feel free to come up and correct me if I'm wrong in this. I, I think at the moment, they're, they're still honing in on, on a curriculum. And, uh, you know, so the hundred and twenty thousand, we feel is a good placeholder that, that can either purchase one of the curriculum or we could phase, you know, phase in and start, uh, you know, kindergarten, first grade or, or something, you know, like it, do it, you know, do it in, in phases. Also, when we were bringing in Math in Focus, one of the big things that was in that initial, uh, that initial, uh, ask was a lot of professional development. One of the things that we did do last year that's already built into, you know, so it's in the present budget, is we increased our professional development line that's already in there for the present, you know, so it's, it's in the present year's budget. So it's sort of level heading into next year. In part, we increased the professional development line because we knew, uh, a lot of the strategic initiatives, as many of you have noted, have, like, how are you going to accomplish it? It's, here's the professional development that we'd go put in place for that.
Mark Smith, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Uh, just because it's nine fifteen, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but the general, uh, like, and I'll give you a much more in-depth presentation, but we've been going through a pretty intensive process. Um, I've got a team of about twenty different educators working, so it's definitely not, I'm just sort of facilitating the process and leading us through the process. And we're working with, um, Desi and we're working with Ed Reports. Like we've been actually a pretty detailed process. At this point, we're down to, we've narrowed the process down to two, um, different, uh, resources that we're looking at. And they're two very different resources and, um, and there is pretty significant cost range between the two, um, and, and they're very different sort of in the way that they lay out their programming. Um, so, uh, you know, giving the two different sets of numbers to Katie and, and, and like Dr. Carpenter said, then we have, we can look at different options. We ultimately want to settle on what's going to be best for Montomoy. And then, you know, we need to understand, we need to put some budget piece in it. And then if we have to think creatively about how to phase something in over more than one year, you know, we could look at, you know, not, not necessarily installing something all K four at one time, you know, maybe we do a couple grade, you know, we do, like Dr. Carpenter said, we do K one or do K one-two and then the next year, three, four and sprint it out over a couple of years. So we've, we've got some options that we can figure, but it's still too early because we're trying to do the process right, um, in order to say we're definitely going forward with this one. But, you know, I also respect that we have a budget process that we need to follow and we need to have some numbers to work with. So I've asked for the vendors that we're down to to give us some preliminary stuff, but it's all kind of rough. That's even rough. You know, I've asked, their, their estimates are very rough because we haven't really dug deep in yet. We've, we narrowed from a pretty extensive array of options down to these two.
Just to follow up, and, and I know it's somewhat early, but the, the one twenty, it's similar to what our principal at Chatham said, you really don't want to build a budget on grants, not that we're talking about grants, but, uh, the one twenty- talking about grants. But the one-twenty will be an enhancement. We may be looking at one-twenty next year and one-twenty the next year. We don't really know until a few months when your committee comes back as it is three-twenty-five. Because right at the moment, minus E and D, we don't have a fund to say, you know, one of the new elementary ELA stuff, we've got this ready for it because the year after that is the science elementary that's funding. But I'm saying this mostly for myself so I can clarify where we're it may not necessarily just be the good year because we have two million in E and D. It may in fact develop that we need to do this far more than just the one-twenty. Thanks, Mark. I've got a second, more demographic question. And again, I know it's early.
It's late, actually.
It's late. Not for me. I'm so excited about.
Early for the budget.
Early in the budget process.
Yeah, thank you. I'm surprised I'm making sense to myself so late. Demographics, and I am sensitive to this. I'm sure a lot are. And it is early. The and I know it's first look. The fourth, third and fourth grade in Chatham is reaching a little bit over twenty percent per sections of two sections each, larger than the Harwich projected X number five classes of third and fourth graders. I can kind of say I can live with ten percent. I don't know. But if the trend and it's a cohort survival is easy because we can just just have to look at the second grade and the first. We don't have to look at live births to see, is this going to be a trend for the next three or four years that we're looking at twenty, twenty-five percent less kids in each third grade class versus a colleague here? So my thought, and it's too simple, would be any school choices and requests coming into our district. My guess is most of them are for Harwich, and you say, no, because. But if we could in if we can enhance that third and fourth grade in Chatham by two or three kids per section, I think it'd be a great deal more comfortable in the short and the long run as we move move forward. That's kind of a question because maybe you can't lower kids in if they don't want to come here. But I think it's something, as you watch, you don't want that to grow. To me, I'm uncomfortable with twenty percent less kids every day that a faculty member is teaching versus someone else.
Sharon?
So this is good information, this PowerPoint, which is new. I'm wondering if there are any plans to I know you said there's level staff. But we had a change with substituting science for Spanish. Are you saying that all staff will be positions will be kept as they are, except for, as you said, there's going to be a elimination because of declining enrollment?
Right.
Otherwise, throughout the system, there's not going to be any other changes?
Same program, same same programs. And, you know, so all the languages, the the enrichments that students have at all schools, all there in this budget.
Was it Tina?
Actually, yeah, I I have a question kind of going off of something Terry said because I I was really struck by that third grade, fourth grade thing as well. And again, I know it's early in the process, but I had a kind of hypothetical, just so I understand how this works. So if if somebody's coming into choice at elementary, and and I would guess that we're doing what we can to push them to Chatham, if there's somebody in Harwich that might need a smaller class, how does the bus? I mean, can can they take the bus to the Chatham Elementary? How does that work?
So so first of all, I was going to chime in on Terry's. But it's great questions. So so we would not be taking in students to through school choice additional students through school choice at Harwich Elementary School at those grade levels. Again, at Chatham, where we see where we see class sizes that are sitting at fifteen point something average, those would be, you know, so so the way it works is families will go and say, I would like to have my third grader attend, you know, attend Monomoy. And and they can check, you know, would they like Harwich or Chatham, we will go through a process and say, in if, you know, we'll say, no, you can't go to Harwich. Those classes are full. They're in our guidelines. But we will say, we will offer families placement at Chatham. And many times, they will go and say, great, you know, means they they want to be in our district. And they know that two years later, they're going to be at our middle school. And, you know, three years after that, they're at our, you know, they're at our high school. So, you know, so we we use school choice, as I said, to fill empty seats, not to go add a whole section of 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 students at a at a grade level at a school.
Yes, and no.
Right.
And and in terms of the Harwich, so students from Harwich can go and apply at interdistrict choice to Chatham. And at those grade levels, we would definitely say, yes, there's space for you. You know, because we'll use we'll use school choice to help equalize the class sizes between you know, between the two schools. In terms of the bus, we don't provide busing from Harwich to Chatham for choice. So school choice, you're responsible for getting there. But families can use existing bus stops that we have in our two towns for school, you know, for school choice. So, you know, so a Harwich family could could bring their, you know, bring their child to a, you know, to a bus stop near the Harwich-Chatham line. And then there's one other thing I was going to say, but it's lost me for the moment.
Okay. If it comes back, you let me know.
Just a last note.
Absolutely.
I'll try to be quick.
I'm waiting for Joe, honestly.
On this intent to increase community input with our first meeting of maybe three, I'm wondering if I know this is kind of really large, but i- if we begin to target that winter meeting, so there's the six people encircle the calendar, I just, whatever tonight is, it's a good time to kind of think, should we do that again and switch the venue to say this building or some other regarding the budget coming up? That would be to me a a good topic for the people to hear.
You want us to discuss a date where we're going to discuss this now?
No.
Okay, all right.
Chief Cooper.
Okay, got it. Any other?
I do have I have one thing. I didn't remember the other thing, but I did remember the one other thing I was going to say.
Yes, Dr. Carpenter.
In terms of just the Tambolios request, the and if we dovetail with Karen's presentation. So Karen's presentation was if we were to address address transportation to off-site venues from an equity standpoint, we would need to add an additional seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars into the budget. Globally speaking, that in a budget that's roughly a forty-million-dollar budget is less than a point-oh-four percent increase. So it's 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 a it's a small amount all in all. I I think it's something that the the committee could go have as a as a specific conversation and a specific vote that you could post at a future at a future meeting. While we have to send the budget, this we have to send the draft budget on the fifteenth to Town Hall and to the library, we have the ability to increase or change this budget. You know, there there will be when the governor's numbers come out, there's going to be a lot of clarity comes in that in that timeframe. And we may need to modify what the budget looks like. And and we can, you know, add, you know, add in, you know, seventeen thousand for this or, you know, decide there's, you know, maybe there's something else that needs to get added in, or there's other things that we may feel we don't need to fund. But but there's, you know, so so just because we submit a draft budget doesn't mean that that's the budget that the school committee votes down the road.
And you're talking about the two thousand twenty-one budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Terry.
We alluded to the busing issue, and I, as I listened, very vehement issues. And I know most people who are going to say no will start with what I just said. I have some reservations, whether it's seventeen or twenty, and it may or may not all come out in the wash. Until I'd like to see Mark and his committee come forward in the next month or whatever and say it's three-eighty. Because if if I'm going to vote twenty, I round seventeen to twenty. And figure that's going to be three or four years off forever for X number of kids. But I heard the number, six young girls who are on that team, a fairly small number, to accommodate, which I see as a correct thing to do. No, no, I can, versus seven hundred elementary kids or whatever that number is. That twenty-four years, now that's pushing eighty thousand towards what might be. So I I know they're not connected at all, but in my little Irish head, I see a priority a little bit higher, at least to durst that in the next month or two, to say both can happen. Or we really need that to happen in the elementary editorial. Thank you.
Oh, hello, Joe.
Adam Cher, good evening.
Good evening.
Might I be recognized to speak?
Joe, would you like to speak?
I would.
Okay.
First, I just to go back to the opening about the premise, the foundation of the budget and the assumptions on which it were based, I was trying to look at it from a hostile standpoint. I I think it's sensible, sound. I think any reasonable-minded person in Chatham and Harwich would say this is a good budget that gives us a reasonable expectation of providing excellent education in the in the two towns, in the district. I'm sure we're going to have some disagreements and conflicts, and that is not only to be expected, even to be welcome. But it seems every underlying point is a sound one, at least to me. There was a I want to ask about sustainability and then one other point. The phrase you used was that the sustainability budget is being restored by the addition of fifty thousand.
The stability.
Stability. I'm sorry. The stability is being restored by the is that looking at two years where we would have been had we been able to? Or is it getting back on track with that last year lost?
So we two fiscal years ago, we funded or the the school committee voted to establish a stabilization account. We funded in that first year fifty thousand dollars into the stabilization account. So there's fifty thousand dollars that's sitting in the account. We in last year or we in the present year's budget, in our draft budget, had an additional fifty thousand dollars that would have brought that account to a hundred thousand. But we decided that for the, you know, good of bringing the budget in where it's in the fiscal where with all with all of the two towns, that we would not fund an additional fifty at that point. So we lowered our budget by fifty thousand. So this again is putting fifty thousand back in annual commitment to fifty thousand towards stability back in there that would bring that account back up to a hundred, should this budget go all the way through town meeting.
Another point, do I understand correctly, the amount of money spent for professional development is eighteen thousand? As I'm looking through this, I'm trying to find out what the sum total is. Maybe this is to Mr. Smith. Is it at that figure? And further connected to this, are we what is our connection with research for better teaching? What's our relationship there? Are we continuing, moving away? And how does that impact us financially?
So I think professional development comes in several different areas within the budget. You know, so just by contract, we have money that's set aside so that every staff member has the ability to take take courses each year and be reimbursed. So there's fifteen hundred dollars per staff member that can be accessed that's part of our contract. And those funds are built in there. There's there's funding for for another avenue of professional developments just in conference funding that's built, conference and workshop funding that's, again, built into the contract. So there's funds that are set aside there. But there's also some funds that are set aside for that at each building level. And that's some of the, you know, some of the work that Robin that Robin's team would have done, would have come from some of those funds in addition to the professional development money that that Mark often would schedule teachers in to do different summer work. So it's it's it comes in a lot of different spots, and we could go at next at our next meeting, go and put all of them together and and do a an actual amount expended for the, you know, for the past year and what we're anticipating for future. But it's not just eighteen.
Good. And I would appreciate it if we could go forward in that direction and get that figure.
All set, Joe? Sharon?
So not for tonight. It's too late.
Okay.
But another time could we have something scheduled for looking at OPEB in the longer range? Not this budget necessarily, but moving out.
And Tina?
Yeah, just a request coming off of what Joe said. I'm curious, after tonight's presentation, what the investment was financially for that to all happen. Is it possible to get a a number?
I think the answer is yes, we yes, we could. And I I think you'll be surprised at how little.
Yeah, I would be very happy to be surprised.
You know, so there's a lot of thanks that are due to, you know, to those that helped support the Westgate Foundation. So that funded a piece of it. And then, as Robin has said, Robin has been networking and developed a a sort of a situation where where a collaborative is allowing us to piggyback for free. You know, so we're, you know, so we're getting a benefit, and they're allowing us to piggyback because we're bringing a lot to the table, too.
And and just for me, as a selling point, because at some point, we're going to have to sell this budget. I for me, I'd like to have that information because what we saw tonight was, in my opinion, a very good investment in our resources, whether they're financial or networking or however they came to be, or a grant. I just would like to see a number of what that would have been had we paid cash for the whole thing. And then you can break it down from there, what part came from a grant, what part came from here, just for my my own knowledge.
Sharon?
Just on piggybacking on what Tina's saying, I think that there is a group of people in the community that are particularly interested in us in our efforts to find money elsewhere rather than from the town. And that's something I don't know that we've paid specific attention to, but this would fall into that category. And maybe we can just be aware when that happens so we can maybe keep a list of those things. Because it does happen quite a bit. But if somebody asked me off the cuff, it would be hard for me to come up with all of those.
Okay. All right, great. So at this point, I is there a motion to approve the draft FY twenty-one budget?
I would move that we approve the draft of the F twenty-one budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the substitute pay rate adjustment. Katie Isarnio, business manager.
On January first, the minimum wage increased in Massachusetts to twelve dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. If you do the math and do our substitute rates, our the substitute rates are twelve dollars and twelve dollars and fourteen cents. So I'm making a recommendation that we stay ahead of that. And we could be proactive because the rates are already published that will go into effect through Jan- January of twenty-two. So the effective January first, the well, I want to just say a sidebar, municipalities are exempt from following the minimum wage requirements, but we've always been a part and tried to stay ahead of that or equal to that. So I was recommending, my recommendation would be that we would increase So I was recommending, my recommendation would be that we would increase the teacher hourly rate for substituting to thirteen dollars, and the daily rate would be ninety-one from the current eighty-five. And then the hourly rate for the instructional assistance would be at the twelve seventy-five with a daily rate of eighty-two, eighty-eight up from seventy-eight. And then there's also plans going forward. I know that this is just in front of you tonight for the first time, so I don't know if you have any questions about it, but I think from a recruitment and hiring of substitutes, it helps to be out in front of that minimum wage rate.
Um, Kayla, sorry, Sharon?
Um, I think I was hearing you, is the teacher assistant rate and the teacher substitute rate almost the same?
They are.
That is kinda shocking to me.
The daily rate for a teacher is eighty-five dollars, and the daily rate for instructional assistant is seventy-eight dollars.
It's not that I wanna undercut anyone, it's just that there's big discrepancy in this, generally, I would hope, in the skill level that teachers have. Do, are most of the teachers we get for substitute teachers certified and experienced, or no? That's unfortunate. Maybe we should look in the future of having a differential.
I, I think, I think many, many of the people, if they had certification, would likely be landing and securing full-time jobs. So, you know, so it's, you know, it's a mix of, we have some, you know, some folks that are retirees that, that are coming in, and, you know, some, you know, folks that are newly graduated from college that are, you know, that are serving as subs.
Okay. Something to think about later.
Katie, we do not have this listed as a vote required for this evening, so is it all right if we vote on that next week?
It is all right.
The following week?
Yes, it is. Yep.
So we will do that at that time. There are any other questions or discussion for Katie tonight? Okay. I'm not gonna pick my head up and look. Item number seven, business hiring process in twenty-one.
I'll be short here because we do have an executive session after this, and we'd like to get out before midnight. We closed just before coming into this meeting, the applic- the application portal for our business manager. I still keep trying to convince Katie not to retire, but she seems to, to see that as a, as a thing she still wants to pursue. But anyway, we have, we had three applicants come in at the last couple days. We actually have nineteen applicants for the role. My want to see, and we'll discuss this further in executive session, is to ideally interview individuals next week, and then hopefully have time to do the reference checks. And if we're efficient to come back in two weeks with a recommendation to the committee, I think that being expedient is in, is, would be advantageous to us because I think there are more school business manager positions out there on school spring right now than anything else, and there is clearly a greater demand than there, than there are applicants in the pool. And I highly recommend us seizing on those that, someone who's good and securing them soon rather than seeing them end up somewhere else. I, you know, I, I would suggest that, you know, we, in executive session, we can talk about who from this group, and then we were hiring for Melissa McGuire's role, which, like a business manager, is a joint hire with the school committee and superintendent. You know, we had a subgroup from the school committee, some central off-staff, staff, it would make sense to have, you know, somebody from the business office. Rick Travers, our facility director, Jim Birchfield, our IT director, a principal, and a couple teachers. And I think we can have a nimble crew too, to get together and make it happen.
Great, thank you, Dr. Carpenter. And moving on to subcommittee reports, are there any reports for tonight? Seeing none, moving back to Dr. Carpenter for the preliminary two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year calendar. You have two copies in your folder.
Those, those are just, those are just drafts that, you know, sort of an FYI, but we, so we'll, at our next school committee meeting, I hope we can, I'll have a proposal to say, okay, let's go with, you know, with one, you know, with, with a particular calendar. You know, contractually, contractually, we, our, our contract is that a school isn't supposed to start until the Wednesday before Labor Day is when we can bring staff back, which then has our students showing up following Labor Day. Labor Day is as late as it can possibly get this coming year, and my worry that, that I have is that, is that it potentially actually has us with our five built-in snow days being at June thirtieth, which, as a superintendent, gives me great anxiety that if we have a stormy winter and we have six storm days, you know, having to break the news to people that, you know, we're having school on a Saturday or during April vacation, and so, so anyway, there, we'll, we're, we're working through some, you know, some possibilities, and I'll bring a presentation back to you next, at our next meeting, but, but that started. Other things to briefly chat with you about that are in your packet. There's a, a nice letter from Ju- uh, Gregorio from the Chatham Board of Health, who was just saying that she was really impressed by our high school student, students that went to the presentation at the Board of Health and the Chatham Board of Health. In light of that presentation, banned the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes and flavored vaping devices at retail outlets in Chatham, and they also commented on how they felt our Biennial Youth Risk Behavior Survey was sort of a good practice to follow. I also have a letter in your packet that I wrote to Chief Gilmett just before the meeting, came in and signed off on a grant application related to this that Joy has been working up. But Tom Clark, our school resource officer here at the high school, emailed, emailed Bill Burkhead and I, you know, with a, an idea that he had based on something he had seen in Florida where, where they had trained a, a dog, a canine, to detect vape and marijuana. And, and the, and he thought that that might actually be a good thing to, to have a dog that would be with the Harwich PD, but, you know, but here with us as, as he'd be our SRO, that could do this. And why, why vape and marijuana? It's, you know, there's everything, everybody, you know, hears about sort of this increase in, you know, sort of vaping, you know, the vaping epidemic. Well, you know, dogs aren't trained to go smell that. Why marijuana? You actually can't go and get a dog to come into your school these days that can detect marijuana, or it's, it's very hard to find one in Massachusetts. Now that marijuana's become legalized for, you know, for adults or outside of school, there's, there's not a need for the police to train dogs to detect marijuana. So if a dog comes into the school, the dog's trained to detect opioids, you know, and, you know, and sort of the harder stuff. But the things that schools and our teenagers are struggling with are sort of the gateway into that, you know, being, you know, nicotine, vape products, and, and marijuana. So the concept here is to, you know, to have Tommy work, you know, work with this, you know, this organization that he's connected with to secure a dog, train the dog, and, and have the dog be a canine unit that can be used here at school, but would also be a resource for other schools on Cape. So this was just me writing a letter of support for this. I think it's a great, a great idea.
I would just say that if we could require that to be a non-allergic dog, like a golden doodle, I'm not real up on what those are, but that would possibly save a lot of problems if we have students, which I'm sure we have some, that have allergies to that. I know for me, to go to even public meetings, I have to take medicine every time I go to a public thing. But if it was a dog, it would, it'd be either the dog or me, unless it was a non-allergic dog. And this isn't unique. There are, it's not uncommon for people to be allergic.
I guess my, I, I'm not the, the canine dog expert when it comes to this. I, I think there are certain, from my, my experience as a school administrator, having had dogs come in, I think there are certain breeds of dogs that are, that are capable of working longer and, and sort of better on the scent detection. I, and I, and I don't know if a golden doodle or a hypoallergenic dog is or not. Yeah, I, I know that, I, I, I know that, I, I, at least I've, I've heard that something like a German shorthaired pointer, if trained, can, you know, can, you know, work, work, work. I mean, that's, the dog lives to go run around and sniff. And other dogs, you know, that are trained, we've had them go into locker rooms, and by the time they finished one locker room, you know, that dog's done. And I, and I think, I think when it comes to, when, I, I, I'm very sensitive to the whole allergy piece of it, and, you know, so, so where the dog, you know, the dog doesn't need to be located in the building, but when you, you know, when we have canine units come in, that the dog will come in for a period of time and go through a locker room or through, you know, you know, through the hallways sniffing, you know, sniffing the lockers. And I think, I think it's probably more important to have the breed be effective for the task.
I'm not sure what, should I get that choice? We're gonna get what we're gonna get. Any other reports, Dr. Carpenter?
Uh, let's see.
No? Good.
That, just, just one last quick thought, getting back to, to the point the temp was brought up. I, I do think that, that it also might be something that would need to, if there's a vote for money, that maybe it's a, maybe you'd need to couple to that a policy committee or a policy subcommittee conversation, you know, just, because if you're, I think, I think if you, if you're voting to provide transportation out of equity concerns, perhaps it doesn't involve a policy decision, but if you're, if you're voting out of safety concerns, I think that's where, you know, do you have a policy that, you know, that students who are using this, you know, that the students have to use the transportation? Or not? And, and I think that has to come from, you know, if that's, if, if we're saying we're providing transportation to and from all off-site athletic events, is it, is it mandatory or is it optional? And, and I think, again, that's where I think there's, sometimes there's a, an intersection between different aspects that the school committee might need to weigh. That's it.
Okay. In the budget forum, did you wanna, the public hearing?
Just, so the date of it, this is, this is the annual challenge when it, so annually, we do a budget forum that is our school committee meeting the second week in February. And annually, I have a conference that I go to on the Thursday, that begins the Thursday of the second week in February. And in past years, what we've done is, is we've backed the budget hearing up and done it on a Tuesday evening. So my suggestion would be, again, if you could accommodate my conference, is that we do the budget presentation Tuesday evening, the, the eleventh. And, and then we would, and we could do the school committee meeting following that if you want. If not, you could have it on Thursday without me, your choice.
Okay.
It'd go a lot shorter.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, we have a invoice. Sorry, I just lost my place on here. FY nineteen prior year invoices to approve, they're in your packet, both of which are from Bryden and Sullivan Insurance Agency. I just need a motion to, we'll, we can approve them at the same time if you read them, because they're from the same company. There's two separate amounts. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two fiscal twenty?
Nineteen.
Nineteen budget for the amounts of three hundred.
Prior year invoice.
Prior year invoice for the amount
Yep.
Of three hundred and sixteen and seven hundred and seventy dollars payable to Bryden and Sullivan Insurance.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? And then we have declaration of surplus. And remember, you can summarize and add numbers up if it makes it easier and quicker. And there's two stable packets in there. Would anyone like to?
I move we accept the disposal of surplus materials with an estimated value under five thousand dollars to be enumerated as follows. One desktop computer from Hewlett-Packard HP one hundred B. Six Dell laptops, D six thirty. Thirty-five Chromebooks from Hewlett-Packard AR five B twenty-two. Four Lenovo laptop ThinkPads. One HP ProBook laptop. Two DVD cassette players from EIKI numbered eighty-eighty. Nine Caliphone portable cassette players, model number not available. One NEC projector NP two-one-six. Eleven Casio keyboards WK eighteen-hundred. One Epson projector model S-six. One Apple iMac. One HP laser printer model five-hundred. One HP laser printer model M-five-three-three. And one DVD-VCR combo by Magnavox DV two-twenty-five. And we'll leave it at that as I'm not sure of the last three letters.
Um, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? You know, motion carries. And for the second disposal surplus materials?
Um, I move to, to send to surplus?
Approve the disposal of surplus.
Approve the disposal of surplus, surplus of one trash bag full of white Harwich truck rider football practice shirts. One trash bag full of blue football game jerseys. One trash bag of white football game jerseys. Eleven pair of miscellaneous blue football pants. One trash bag full of blue youth shark football game jerseys.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have just one question about that.
You want one?
I don't personally want any, but there may be people that would. Is that optional for people?
Katie and Sonia, business manager?
Even though we declare it a surplus and that we can dispose of it, that doesn't mean we're gonna throw them away. mean we're going to throw them away. So we'll, we'll offer them up. Because if you recall, when we had that sale, people came up with their.
Mary Angelair would like some Rough Rider uniforms.
Exactly. So it, we'll figure out some way.
Thank you.
So there was a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. Speakers are limited to five minutes. And at this point of the night, I'm definitely going to stick to the five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to comment tonight? Charles?
I know at this point you might not be, but I am so happy that I came to this school committee meeting tonight.
I am.
And I am because of that presentation from the people at Chatham Elementary School. And many of you on the committee are educators and you know how precious what you saw was tonight, when you saw a staff like that, so collegial, so enthused about what they're doing. And they're all taking big risks. They're all revolutionizing education in this world of drill and kill strategies to bring up MCAS scores. This is a whole different direction with a high level of risk. I was very blessed, the last 10 years of my career before I retired, my superintendent transferred me to be principal of a school with a staff like I saw tonight. And I thought I died and went to heaven and it was, it was magnificent. And people say to me, you know, you're always so enthusiastic about the Monroe School District. This confirmed for me, my enthusiasm for the district and why it should be. And that, the other point I want to make on that is that takes leadership. And I have a great respect for what I've seen in Dr. Millen and the other administrators of the district, because that wouldn't happen without the leadership of the principals. Somebody did that for me for the school I inherited. I don't know if I could have done it myself. I don't think I could have done it myself, but I was blessed that somebody did it, like's happening there. And that requires a Dr. Millen leadership at the central office. And the support of the central office needs is from the school committee. And when everybody can give people that comfort level to take those risks, how could anybody see that and not say, who wouldn't want their children to go to school at that school? And Terry, your point about how we're going to bring those numbers in Chatham Elementary School up at the elementary level, I said to Rob, and I met her in the corridor, there's the package, right? Package tonight, take it out there and you've got a recruiting tool. Second, on the matter of the transportation to practices. I was notorious in the city, I moved from, to Harwich for many things, associated with my fighting for school budgets. One of them was, I was the one, I always proposed, because we were in a terrible budget situation, nothing comparable to here, with class sizes 25 to 30 at the elementary level, fairly typical. And I would always propose that the school committee should eliminate athletics from the school budget, because I felt those would be supported in my community by other parts of the community. They would never let athletics go under. But I could not get one ally on my side for that point, even among all the budget fighters. And they would educate me on the importance of athletics in the program, because I was looking at a different set of priorities. And they talked to me about how important athletics are, how for some students, that's the main reason for coming to school. For some people, that's where they get their leadership and character qualities built up. Just so many positive things that they said, there's no way, even if we're going to have 30 in a classroom in elementary school, we're not going to eliminate athletic, we're not going to take that risk. So I'm thinking tonight, if it's that important, then isn't every part of the athletics program equally important? And see, in some, some elements, most of the elements of the program here in the school district have the practices right here on site. And, you know, have the games right here on site. And that's different for the programs that were spoken about tonight. And, you know, and I'm wondering, how many of those youngsters in those programs is athletics that key component to? And do, do you want to eliminate that possibility for any student? I guess what I, I would think about is, is there anyone who can't participate in athletics because they can't make it to those practices because they can't deal with the transportation? As well as the issue of, do we ever want to have the risk taken that there was a tragedy that occurred because we didn't have transportation set up? But, you know, my, my thinking was along the line of the importance of athletics and the equity, not equity male, female, boys, girls, but equity sport to sport. Because for me, maybe ice hockey is the one place I shine and I'll never make it on the football team or basketball team or softball team. So just some food for thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. At this time, we will be adjourned to executive session pursuant to MGL 30A Section 21 to discuss strategy with respect to union and non-union contracts coming out for adjournment only. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. 10:04 PM.
Apparently the lights go off at 10 o'clock. It's not a non switch.
I am so thirsty right now. It's not even funny.